Okay, I will actually reconvene our original meeting, which started at 5 o'clock. We went into closed session. And what I have to report is that we did conclude our evaluation of the town manager, and we approved a salary increase. And there'll be more information about that at our next council meeting. So with that, I will adjourn our special meeting, and I will convene the August 5th, 2025 meeting of the Corte Madera Town Council. Please join us for a pledge of allegiance to our flag.
(Inaudible) America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Rivasio.
Here.
Okay, this is an open time for public comment. This is only for items that are not currently on the agenda. If you would like to talk to us about anything not currently on the agenda, please head on over there to the microphone and online. If you can get your hands raised, we'll be to you shortly. So, welcome. Go right ahead. You can introduce yourself if you'd like. We'd love to know who you are.
Where is the center? Where is the center? We don't know which way up you are.
Excuse me, just a minute. Could someone fix his microphone? He needs to have it more so that it can be heard. We are live on Zoom also. Something's happening with my sound now that's weird. Okay, thank you for your patience. And my microphone is way too loud back there in the sound room. Okay. Thank you. You may start again.
So, Town Center, we know, I mean, downtown Corte Madera is up here where the old train station used to be. Okay? But when I ask people, where's downtown Corte Madera, they don't know. And if they do have an answer, it's the shopping centers. All right? So that's our identity. But our shopping centers are in trouble. We've lost Macy's, we've lost Rite Aid. Okay? So what are we gonna do? When I redesigned the Northgate 1 Shopping Center on Freitas Parkway, I took the parking and redid it, and we got enough space to put the Walgreens on the corner. When I did the marketplace over here, in where we have Book Passage, okay, and Total Wines, was able to redo the parking there, and we got all those buildings on the right-hand side. See, parking is a major form determinant in site design. So about 10 years ago, I looked at the town center over here, just for fun, for my own, and I was able to rearrange the parking and get about 13 stalls. Not enough to move the needle to do anything. But none of that matters anymore. And why? Those parking lots are gonna become empty. Some of it's gonna be due to the Amazons and the Walmarts, the e-commerce, but most of it's gonna be from Waymo and from driverless taxis. When it becomes cheaper for us to get an Uber without a driver, take us to this place or that place, when it's cheaper than owning our own car and putting gas in it and the insurance and all of those things, there's gonna be a seismic shift in what's gonna happen in those parking lots. So I'm really concerned with my experiences up at Northgate, where they had the opportunity to have a Costco in there, and now it has, would have had a lot more traffic, but now it's gonna be low-income housing. I don't wanna see that happen here. So what are we going to do? Are we gonna be restrictive with our planning? Are we gonna be aggressive and try to do something really cool? My time's up.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to know someone else is thinking about these things, so thank you. Anybody else for open time for items not on the agenda? Okay, well, somebody coming? Okay, if you do wanna talk, please line up at the microphone so we can, we know we got a long meeting potentially tonight, so thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, and congrats to Mr. Wolf. We are a Tam High graduate, same year, so as long as you have him here, it'd be a better place. He's a good man, and I mean that.
You're as old as he is?
Yes. I am. We're old farts, but truly, a good man, I mean that. Um, I'm here to, uh, to remind you that many of you drive around town with no front license plate. Some of you came here tonight in your cars with no front license plate. Me, growing up in Marin City, Tam High graduate, still to, and today, we weren't afforded that. Good to see you here. We weren't afforded that luxury. Now driving around Corte Madera, all just Twin Cities or Central Marin, there are thousands of you with no front license plate, but you're given a pass. Still today, black men are being pulled over for having no front license plate and other pretextual stops. So I wanna make you aware of this, in case you're not. You know it, but I wanna remind you. It's good to see the Central Marin Police here. I asked a couple of them over the last six months, what about no front license plate? I'm not advocating for people to be pulled over, but what about that? How is that working in town? Oh, well, we don't wanna spend our time on that. So all of a sudden, because white folk are driving around with no front license plate, it's inconvenient to pull them over. So I ask you, city council, and I'll ask them at the next council meeting, police meeting in a couple of weeks, is that, for license plate, the only pretextual stop that you're ignoring? Are you attacking other people, black and brown men, for other pretextual stops? Or are you just going to continue what's happened for decades? I put in the PRA, and I don't wanna see the data. I have data, 30 years of data from the DA's office that shows an ugly history. Nothing will change unless we have a fat lawsuit, and I hope that happens one day soon. I will continue to pursue our human rights and civil rights lawsuit in Marin County in one of the most racist counties in California. Not because I say so, data says so. So I ask you, and I'll ask Norton in a couple of weeks, what are your procedures? What are you doing? Are you still harassing black men, as I was growing up here in this district? Many a times, me and my black buddies, with a backpack and a basketball, being harassed. I don't, my time's up. So I'll see you in a couple of weeks. I'm pulling the data, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Damian. Thank you for your time tonight. Last call. Anyone else on items not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Tracy Lauterman, and I live on Montecito, right near Menke Park. And I'm here today just to tell you, I'm really concerned about the traffic situation there. So I go in and out every day, 20 times a day, on Montecito. And with all the new businesses that have gone in, and now food truck, it's dangerous. People are having coffee in the middle of the street after their classes. They're literally wandering around. They're looking at their phones and walking out into the middle of a street, because it looks like a parking lot, but it's not. And my suggestion is, first of all, putting lines down the street so it clearly marks that this is a two-way street. There are cars coming, it's not a parking lot, it's not somewhere to hang out in the middle of the street. And then we've got First Street that comes down, and two people that have left my house have gotten T-bones, coming down Montecito, because people who don't understand the area come down First Street and go, and don't look. They just come down, either turn right or turn left, and there's no yield, there's nothing to inform people. We haven't even got, now that summer's gonna be over, all the kids are gonna be coming back. We have more parking now in front of Zondas and across from Zondas. We have the art school, where all the parents are now gonna bring their kids to art at 3 o'clock, they're gonna come pick them up, they're all gonna double park with all their blinkers on, they don't park in the parking lot, they come and they wait in their cars. You can't get through. There's no way now, with two cars parked on both sides and people double parked on the side, we're just not gonna be able to get through. So it's just becoming more and more of a problem. And with the food truck now, when that thing is open during high school lunchtime, that's gonna be a zoo. And there's gonna be a lot of action around there. There's already people double parking out there, picking up their burgers. So it's just, it's a problem. And I think I wrote to you, Pat, about it, and I've also talked to Adam about it, because he was out there. I know you're thinking about doing a one-way, which I definitely don't agree with that. That would be a real problem going up and around for all of us every time. But anyways, just before someone gets really hurt, it's really a problem. So just wanna make you aware.
Thanks very much. Thank you for your time and your thoughts. And anybody else? Last call? Anybody online?
Yes, we have a hand raised from Roy Wolford.
Hello, Mr. Wolford. You may go ahead.
Good evening. I'm going to address some goings-on at Sonoma State, SSU, and the CSU system. I received an email from the head of the Sonoma Geology Department in January 2025. He wrote, "Our projected budget deficit has increased. We now estimate the deficit to be $23.9 million, a figure significantly larger than the $21 million projected last fall. Sonoma State's enrollment has dropped 38% since its peak in 2015." Paraphrasing him, "Many academic department closures and consolidations, course eliminations, and instructional staff eliminations will take place requiring significant budget reductions." Let's look at the entire CSU system dollars. California State University says it's short $2.3 billion, a staggering budget gap that has grown sharply since the system first revealed two years ago that it didn't have the money to properly educate its students. The 2024-25 total CSU operating budget is $8.6 billion. 2025-26 budget plan is $9.1 billion in total funding. Commentary on SSU. Judy Sikaki became the SSU president in 2016 with the explicit goal of making Sonoma State more accessible and less elitist. She changed SSU providing a well-rounded liberal arts education into one that elevated DEI and Noma Nation to the highest of mission and value standards. DEI and Noma training was made mandatory for all entering students, and in some classes, students had to declare their pronoun in order to enter their class. Anyone know of a town council that made DEI their mission and values? Sikaki resigned in disgrace in 2022. That resignation ushered in a period of leadership turnover. Is it any wonder enrollment dropped 38% at SSU? Students want equality and freedom, not totalitarian DEI and Noma indoctrination. Do DEI and Noma work at SSU? Let's look at gender demographics at SSU. Females, 63%. Males, 37%. Not very DEI. And of course, there's the massive operational and budget mismanagement. In closing, on May 16, 2022, I requested the town council to please replace DEI with no discrimination policy for mission and values. The council's response to that request was to declare DEI training for all staff and council members mandatory, as enforced, at a cost of over $40,000. It may be time for all past and present DEI council members to pay their fair share and reparations to provide true justice to the residents of Corte Madera.
Thank you, Mr. Wolford. Out of time. Thanks very much. Okay, is that it for open time public comment?
Yes. No other hands are raised, and no email public comment was received for open time.
So I wanna say, now that I appreciate all of your patience, we do have a couple more items to attend to before we get to the item that I think most of you are here for. We are now going to do a quick interview of a candidate for the Planning Commission. You should all be very impressed that this man is willing to step forward and join for no, no pay, no nothing, the Planning Commission, so.
Not so sure after seeing you.
Shall we just wave the interview and appoint him right away? All right, so, hello, Mr., I don't even know your name.
Rogers.
Could you introduce yourself and let us know who you are and why you'd like to be on the Planning Commission?
Yes, Andy Rogers. I've lived in Corte Madera for 15 years.
Could you lift that microphone up a little closer to? These microphones really require you speak right into them to be.
Is that better?
Maybe he can even lift it up for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, officer.
Sorry about that. Oh, and I wanna first apologize for barging into your special meeting. I had no idea, I thought maybe I was in the wrong place, so. Anyway, I moved up here with my family 15 years ago from the city, primarily to attend the schools and also just to have more space and summer for my family. So I've come to really love the community, and I very much wanna be part of its growth, and I know that there's probably a lot of significant projects coming down the line. I attended the Tamil Vista meeting, and I heard both sides on that, and I found it a little unfortunate that there wasn't enough public input to the design process of that project. So I'd kind of like to be part of the decision-making process or advisory process in upcoming projects.
Great. So just three quick questions. Do you have any experience with design, architecture, and construction? If you can explain that a little bit, and your ability to understand and read architectural plans, schematics, and engineering things.
Sure. Well, to start, since I was about six years old, I've been drawing pictures of houses, so I think that's... I went to college and then afterwards, with an interest in building and design, I spent about a year working in the building trades. And then I attended a master's program in New York in real estate development. I spent a total of five years in the nonprofit sector, both in Somerville, Massachusetts, and in Bend, Oregon, developing affordable housing. And then I got an architecture degree and have been practicing architecture for 25 years. So I feel like I can read plans pretty well.
Do you have any conflicts that may present you or prevent you from making an unbiased decision concerning items on the agenda?
I don't think so. I have a handful of client projects in Corte Madera right now, but obviously, I'd abstain from being part of the planning process for those.
So how would you handle those conflicts of interest when you bring a client's work to the town?
Ah, I haven't really thought about that, but I would not.
It's actually not one of your questions, so I don't think you really have to answer it. It was kind of just an impromptu follow-up.
Well, I would let the client know that I don't have any influence in, as far as the Planning Commission goes, and that I would probably abstaining for any hearing that needed to happen for their project.
It's called recusing yourself, yeah.
Yes.
Just to clarify, there are regulations on this, and we would provide guidance, because you may not actually, it's complicated, but we would provide you with guidance.
I was just checking to see if he knew that, you know?
I'm aware of the conflict of interest, but I would need to learn more about, it's the Brown Act, right? Basically, that, you know? Or, I can learn that later, I think.
And then the other question you were given was, have you had an opportunity to work with our community development department, planning on any projects? And do you have an understanding about how these decisions are made? And what challenges do you see in the next few years?
Yes, I've been working with the planning department here for quite a few years on different projects, and I very much have enjoyed my work with Martha and Tracy in particular, and that's part of the reason I think I'm interested in this position, is to help them with their work. I'm sorry, what was the other part of that?
Just kind of, what do you see as the challenges moving forward?
I think a great challenge, especially if there's more multi-unit housing proposed, I think the greatest challenge is to stay, for the infrastructure to stay ahead of those projects. I know there's great concerns about traffic and parking, and I think a lot of the projects are gonna happen during, along a certain corridor, and I think one of the challenges for the city is to be prepared for that and to be more proactive than reactive as possible.
Okay, and then would you like to make a, oh, wait. How do you reconcile personal opinions and emotions if they conflict with policies and regulations?
Well, I realize that the policies come first, so I would set my emotions aside. Of course, I'm gonna have my perspective, but policies need to be followed, obviously.
And now you have an option, whether you'd like to make a one-minute closing statement.
No, I don't need to do that, because I don't think everyone's here for this interview.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time and your humor. So we now have, back to the council for any comments or questions, and then there'll be an open time for a public comment if somebody has a concern. But at this time, I understand we have one opening and one candidate, so the only question is, do we want him or not? So what's your pleasure, guys?
I'm fine with him.
Yeah, I would move to approve the nomination and thank the applicant for being willing to step up and serve our community.
Can we get a vote, or do we need to open it for public comment? Public comment, anybody with a remark regarding this applicant? Anybody online?
No hands raised online.
Then we'll move to the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes. Enthusiastic, yes, welcome. Welcome. Okay, next up, we have the consent calendar, which, we first have a little presentation, and would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor Rivasio. I'm also members. Presentation to make. Everyone here and members of the public, and congratulations to Andy. I think you're the first Planning Commissioner to actually get a round of applause when you actually got put onto the commission. It's great. And this is a, I didn't warn Vernon that we'd have such a large audience this evening as well, but it's actually quite appropriate, so.
Could we ask him to come up to the microphone? People don't know who we're talking about.
Absolutely, he will, yes.
Vernon Santos, come on down.
Come on up. We're gonna do a little recognition, and it's really with a great deal of appreciation and gratitude that we get to honor Vernon Santos today. Very, very cool. Thank you. But really, it's rare that these days that we get to honor somebody who's spent a whole career, a good portion of your life, with one organization, with our town of Corte Madera. 28 years Vernon has worked for our maintenance team in the corporation yard. So it's quite a remarkable accomplishment here that we're honoring you today. Vernon's really made a huge impact to our community's quality of life through his work, which included, really, I think a big part of it was elevating the beauty of the town, giving people a real pride and a sense of pride in our public spaces, our parks, in our community in general. When you think of Vernon, I always think of hanging baskets, we think of the medians, the beautiful flowers. You know, it's only because of people like Vernon that we have those things. You know, he left a mark on not only the town, but also so many community members with his kindness, the care, his dedication to the town, which happens to be also Vernon's community as well. Vernon's a resident here of Corte Madera, and I think most of all, really, your commitment to serving others. You take great pleasure in it. He always does it with a smile. And so many of you, I know I've seen Vernon around in our parks and doing work on behalf of our residents. So it's a great, really great legacy that you're leaving all of us, and we thank you for your example, and really wish you and your entire family nothing but the best in your retirement. And congratulations, you have a lot to be proud of, and it's just been a pleasure to get to know you and be your town manager. Thanks. Thank you. Wow.
Vernon, Vernon, would you like to say a few words? Vernon?
I will say, we have, this is.
Vernon, would you like to say a few words? Would Vernon like to just say a few words?
Sure, there we go.
Hello, everybody. You know, this is, to me, it's kind of like the weather. I never thought it was going to be that kind of ending for my life here. I'm very, very proud to be part of the community, be part of this town for so many years, and I wanna thank, thank you for the community. They know me, and they support me all the time, so. Especially you, Adam, you do a lot of good things here for the town. So, yeah, thank you, everybody, especially the education community.
Vernon.
Thank you.
So, in typical Vernon fashion, I asked him, like, what can we do? What would you like? You know, maybe we can get you a little something as you depart the town and working for the town. Vernon's daughter, is your daughter here, actually painted our old logo, and so we had it in one of our offices during the move, and we said, you know, let's get that back to you, and we'll put a nice frame on it. I didn't wanna give it to Pat to, because you, I knew you would wanna hang it up, but...
Go ahead, go ahead.
In any case, this is.
Thank you, thanks very much. If you drive by those median strips and see those beautiful flowers, it just seemed to live there no matter what happens, that's because of Vernon. I heard about him for years before I met him, and everybody said, if there's a problem with plants, just call Vernon, he'll figure it out, he'll find something that'll grow there. And so he's been our magic man for a while. Really appreciate it. Okay, thank you, Vernon. All right, we'll move on now to the consent calendar. These are items that are grouped together because they've either been previously discussed or we don't think they require further discussion, but if there's anyone on the council or in the public who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar for specific deliberation, please speak now or forever hold your peace. Anybody wanting to pull anything? Anybody online?
No hands raised from attendees online, and no other requests to pull any items or public comment for the consent calendar.
Okay, then can we take a vote on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Oh, thank you. Anybody got a second?
Second. Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. So next up is 6A, which is our public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing to consider appeal application PL 250027, requesting reversal of the Planning Commission's approval of major design review application PL 240048 and major variant application PL 250016 for a second driveway at 800 Corte Madera Avenue, including retaining walls exceeding three feet in height within the required rear yard setback. The Planning Commission approved the application by a four-to-one vote. A resident of Corte Madera has filed an appeal of that decision, and tonight's hearing will proceed according to Council Rule 6.7. And tonight's hearing will proceed according to Council Rule six point seven. We will proceed as follows. Here's just sort of an outline. Our planning staff will present a report. The applicant will present to council first. Is that correct? That that is the applicant who speaks first? Can I confirm that? Oh, I see. So the appellant speaks first in the presentation, then the applicant will respond, both given ten minutes. Council will ask questions, will take public comment. And then the applicant and appellant will each have five minutes to respond. And then we'll discuss, deliberate, and take any action. So firstly, I would like to ask if council members will go down the line have had any communications with either the applicant or the appellant that they would like to disclose. Want to start with Fred?
Yeah, I'll go first. I met with the applicant representatives on seven twenty-four and eight eleven. And I also met with the, I think, three of the neighbors on seven twenty-four. And then my meetings did not cause me to be biased in favor or against any party. And I'm prepared to decide the matter on evidence presented tonight.
I met with the applicant representatives on July twenty-second. And I met with the appellants or neighbors on July first. And my meetings did not cause me to be biased in favor or against any party. And I'm prepared to decide the matter on evidence presented tonight.
And Jim?
I met with the appellants on July nineteenth and with the applicant on July twenty-sixth. And my meetings did not cause me to be biased either for or against any party. And I'm prepared to decide the matter on the evidence presented tonight.
Ann Rosa?
I met with the applicants and applicant representatives on July twenty-ninth. I met with the appellants and two, three neighbors also on July twenty-ninth. My meetings did not cause me to be biased in favor or against any party. And I'm prepared to decide the matter on evidence presented tonight.
And I too met with the applicant representatives on July twenty-fourth. I was in the same meeting with Fred and then also the appellants and the neighbors right after that. My meetings did not cause me to be biased in favor or against any party. And I am prepared to decide the matter tonight on the evidence presented.
Okay, so with that, our first step is to welcome the staff to present. Excuse me, yes? Oh, okay. You know what, Michael, there's a seat right here in front that. Is it a lot of people? Okay, so can you tell that to the sound man in the back? You know, this is a big Hollywood production, guys. We gotta, we gotta get our tech guys in here, right? Okay, can you hear me now? I don't, I don't want to be so loud that it distorts, but how about there in the back? Can you hear me? Should I go ahead? Okay. So we're going to have next the staff presentation. Martha Battaglia, our principal planner, and Ann Danforth, Assistant Town Attorney, will be presenting the overview and kind of executive summary of the project.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the Town Council. This is an appeal hearing of a second driveway at eight hundred Corder Madera Avenue. The Town Council will be evaluating the appeal itself and the findings that were made by the Planning Commission in their approval of the design review and variance application. Additional members of Town Staff, which include the interim Public Works Director, Chris Good, and the Fire Chief, Ruben Martin, are also here in person and available to answer questions. Now, the Community Development Director, Amy Lyle, will be participating remotely via Zoom. In addition, the Town's Assistant Town Attorney, Ann Danforth, is here, as is the Town's Consulting Arborist, Kent Julin of Arbor Science. And everyone in attendance is available to answer questions that the council may have. A timely appeal was, next slide, a timely appeal was filed on June sixth, twenty twenty-five by Jan Bertow and Karen Lauriston of four oh five Sausalito Street. The appeal was submitted by two property owners and supported by signatures from an eighteen additional owners. The appeal requests that the Town Council reverse the Planning Commission's decision and deny the application. The appeal is included as attachment two to the staff report. The appellants submitted supplemental information on July thirtieth that further expanded upon the points in the appeal. This information is included as attachment twelve to the staff report. And I will provide some additional information on the points of the appeal in a subsequent slide. Next slide. The project includes a major design review and a major variance application to construct a second driveway at eight hundred Corder Madera Avenue. The project includes retaining walls that exceed three feet above height in the required rear yard setback. The purpose of this driveway is to enhance emergency egress and to improve access for the Central Marin Fire Department. The driveway would serve as the primary driveway for the property owners. Visitors, staff, and deliveries would continue to use the existing driveway off of Corder Madera Avenue. The project would result in the removal of forty-seven trees and the replacement planting of thirty-two trees. It also includes a new entry gate, grading improvements, and drainage. And the driveway would increase the lot coverage of the property by point five percent, bringing the total to four percent. And the Corder Madera Municipal Code allows retaining walls that create a built-up yard to be a maximum of three feet or less in required yards. And the variance is required since some of the retaining walls in the rear yard exceed three feet. Next slide. The project is located at eight hundred Corder Madera Avenue, as shown on this slide. The site has a general plan land use designation of open residential. It is zoned R one C, and it is within the Hillside Land Capacity District. The property is irregular shaped lot, that is approximately eleven point four acres, which is more than double the standard lot size of the R one C district, which is a minimum of five acres. The topography is steeply sloped, with the average slope being fifty-two percent. The property is also located within the Wildland Urban Interface, also known as the WUI, and it's considered a high-risk area. The property is situated in the southwestern portion of Corder Madera, near the border of Mill Valley. To the south, the property adjoins the Alto Bowl Open Space Preserve, which is a hilltop green belt with public trails. And residential properties are located to the north of the project site. And it includes residences on Sausalito Street, Chapman Drive, and also on Alta Terrace. The existing site is developed with an approximate sixty-four hundred square foot single-family residence that was built in the early two thousands. There are also additional accessory structures on the site. The property includes a swimming pool, a sports court, and raised planter boxes. Access to the various buildings are currently provided from an existing driveway from Corder Madera Avenue. And no modifications are proposed to the existing structures as part of this project. The additional driveway would not facilitate any additional development beyond what is currently allowed by the municipal code. And this site plan is showing the location of the proposed new driveway in the the black hatch marks. The driveway would begin at the end of the hairpin turn on Alta Terrace, and it would extend up slope to the existing rear service road on the property. A portion of the driveway, approximately a hundred and twenty feet, is within the town right-of-way. The driveway is approximately four hundred and forty-five feet, which includes a hundred and twenty feet in the right-of-way and an additional three hundred and twenty-five feet on private property. The picture on the left shows the view from the bottom of the driveway. And the picture on the right shows the view from the right-of-way looking up towards the property. The public would continue to be able to access the right-of-way following completion of the project. However, it would largely be inaccessible during construction. The grading associated with the driveway includes approximately three hundred and seventy cubic yards of cut and eight hundred and seventy-five cubic yards of fill. Since the combined total exceeds a thousand square feet, a grading permit approved by the council would be required prior to issuance of any permits. This graphic illustrates the areas of cut and fill associated with the driveway. The white color indicates no cut or fill. The darkest green indicates the greatest volume of fill, up to twelve feet. And the darkest red indicates the greatest volume of cut, up to ten feet. Most of the cut is occurring at the lower portion of the driveway, while the majority of fill is concentrated midway at the turn and also towards the upper sections of the driveway. The areas of greatest cut and fill are also the areas where the tallest retaining walls would be. And in the R one C district, a design review is required for any new lot coverage. And the darker green areas shown on this slide include more than three feet of fill. So these are the areas that are contributing to new lot coverage. The removal of a tree requires a tree permit unless it is specifically exempted by the Town's Municipal Code. Exemptions include trees that are below permit size, which is fifty inches in circumference or less, or a hundred and twenty inches in aggregate for a multi-stem tree. Exemptions also include the removal of undesirable species, the removal of fire-prone species deemed a fire hazard, the removal for emergencies, or removal related to sunlight and view claims. The applicant provided an arborist report that was prepared by Bartlett Tree Experts. And this report included a tree disposition table, which evaluated the seventy-two, seventy-two trees in the project area. There are nearly twelve hundred trees on the project site, and the arborist report only evaluated the trees within the the area of the immediate project. The tree disposition table includes information on the species, the size, a preservation suitability, and whether each tree is proposed for removal or preservation. The project involves the removal of forty-seven trees, while twenty-five trees, including most of the redwoods, would be preserved. The applicant evaluated multiple alignments, and the current alignment is the one that affects the least amount of redwood trees. Of the forty-seven trees designated for removal, twenty-two are permit-sized trees, which again means they have a circumference of fifty inches or more. And most of the trees proposed for removal are California bay laurels. And many of the trees are in poor health. Next slide. The replacement planting plan includes thirty-two new trees on site. And this consists of a variety of tree species, as shown on this table. A ten of the trees would be planted in the vicinity of where the trees are being removed. And an additional twenty-two trees would be planted in the western portion of the property. Other replacement vegetation, including the species, the location, and the sizes were reviewed by both the Town's Consulting Arborist as well as the Central Marin Fire Department. A recommendation was made by WRA Environmental Consultants that the woody shrubs, which are the toyon and the beaked hazelnut, be substituted with a tree that has, that would contribute to tree canopies. And these trees could include coast redwood, big-leaf maples, coast live oaks, or Pacific madrones. And a condition of approval has been added that requires the landscape and restoration plan be modified to follow this recommendation. Next slide. Following the first Planning Commission hearing in April, the applicant revised the plans to include additional information on drainage improvements. As required by local and state regulations, the project is designed to result in no net increase to stormwater runoff. Since the project would result in more than five thousand square feet of new impervious surfaces, it is considered a regulated project and would need to include low-impact development, also known as LID. And this is part of the stormwater Phase Two general permit. LID techniques can include such things as bio-retention, and it helps to infiltrate infiltrate water into the ground rather than flowing over impervious surfaces. And if there are any specific questions related to the drainage improvements, the interim Public Works Director, Chris Good, and the project civil engineer are best suited to answer those questions. The Fire Chief, Ruben Martin, reviewed the original submittal and also met the project team on site on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four to discuss the driveway design. Several modifications were made to the original design to address the Fire Department's comments. These changes are outlined on this slide. And they include such things as adding a NOX box, increasing the turnout sizes, increasing the width of the driveway in certain sections, and modifying the radi at switchbacks and at the top of the driveway. The Fire Department has indicated that the driveway will enhance their ability to access the property during emergencies and would enable the property owners to evacuate more quickly in event of an emergency. The Fire Chief is available to answer any questions that the council may have about the Fire Department's review of the project. The applicant introduced the proposed project to the neighbors in the immediate vicinity in February twenty twenty-four via a mailing. The letter outlined the proposed project and provided details on a neighborhood meeting. This letter was sent to five neighbors on Alta Terrace, two on Alta Way, and six on Sausalito Street. Following this initial outreach, the town received a lot of comments and concerns from many of the neighbors in the area. So Town Staff coordinated a neighborhood meeting on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, which was attended by myself, the Fire Chief, the applicant team, and approximately fifteen neighbors. After the first Planning Commission hearing in April, the applicants held a follow-up meeting on site on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, which was attended by the applicant team and approximately fifteen neighbors. And most recently, the neighborhood, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting at the community center, which was attended by approximately fifteen neighbors. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the project on April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Fourteen individuals provided in-person comments, all of which expressed concerns with the project. Common issues that were raised by the neighbors included increased traffic on Alta Terrace, the tree removal, and potential for resulting erosion, emergency access impacts, construction-related impacts such as roadway damage, and opposition to paving a right-of-way area that is currently used by the neighbors as a walking path. There was one comment provided via Zoom in support of the project. The Planning Commission recommended that the applicant meet with the neighbors and respond to the concerns that they raised at the hearing. The hearing was continued to May twenty-seventh. On May twenty-seventh, the Planning Commission held a continued public hearing for the project. Fourteen individuals provided comments, all of which raised concerns and opposition to the project. And many of the concerns expressed were similar to those at the April Planning Commission hearing. The Planning Commission, by a four-one vote, conditionally approved the design review and variance application. And the Planning Commission resolution is included as attachment nine. The Planning Commission added several conditions of approval. Next slide. The conditions of approval that were added are shown on this slide. They have been, they were incorporated into the final Planning Commission resolution. And the conditions include, number one, to restore. and the conditions include, number one, to restore the existing right-of-way to a condition that is as good or better as its current condition; two, to create a better road base for the first part of the driveway that's more environmentally friendly, and this would need to be reviewed and approved by the Central Marin Fire Department; three, to modify the retaining wall color to brown and modify the texture so the walls blend in with the environment; four, to modify the construction's start time on Mondays through Fridays to allow the project to start at eight rather than at seven, and to limit the work done on weekends to just movement and maintenance of equipment; and number five is to modify Condition of Approval Twenty-Six to include text that was provided by staff, which clarifies that maintenance staff can use the driveway for vegetation management, and also that any monitoring of driveway use would be done by town staff. And lastly, six, required that the applicants hold two additional meetings with the neighbors. The applicant developed a project alternate, which they provided to staff on July thirtieth. This alternate is shown on this slide, and the alternate would shift the driveway up towards private property approximately five feet. This modification would result in the driveway gate being located on private property instead of in the right-of-way. And it also would modify the height of some of the retaining walls. It would change the height of the retaining walls in the right-of-way from three and a half to four feet to one and a half to two feet. And it also would increase the retaining wall, shown in brown on these views, from about eleven and a half feet to thirteen and a half feet. The project alternate was included as Attachment Ten to the staff report. And I'm not going to go into too much detail on it, but I anticipate that the applicant will provide information in their presentation. Following the Planning Commission hearing, the town received two comments from the Marin Audubon Society expressing concerns related to the number of trees proposed for removal, the potential impact to the northern spotted owl, and objections to using a CEQA exemption. Now, these letters are included as Attachment Fourteen to the staff report. And in response to these concerns, staff met with representatives from the Marin Audubon Society and also engaged W R A Environmental Consultants to further evaluate the issues that were raised. Senior biologist Jason Yakich of W R A Consultants conducted a field investigation on July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five and prepared a northern spotted owl assessment for the property. This assessment is included as Attachment Fifteen. The assessment includes a description of the project site, a background on the northern spotted owl, habitat assessment, impact analysis, and recommendations. It is noted in the assessment that the project site provides at best only very marginal northern spotted owl habitat. And according to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Spotted Owl Observations Database, the closest spotted owl location to this site is in the Alto, Camino Alto Space Preserve, about point-three miles from the vicinity of the project. The assessment provided recommendations, including that tree removal should be limited to the period outside of the northern spotted owl and general bird nesting season. And a condition of approval has been added to limit tree work removal to occurring between September first and February twenty-eighth. The recommendations include conducting a northern spotted owl presence and absence survey of areas within point-two-five miles of the project footprint prior to any construction during the nesting season, and also on modifying the woody shrubs, the toyon and the beaked hazelnut to species that contribute to tree canopy. And all of these conditions of approval have been incorporated into the draft Town Council Resolution. The project was determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA, under the categorical exemption Class Three. This type of exemption is commonly used for construction of new homes and driveways on existing residential lots where it can be seen that there will be no significant impacts on the environment. And staff determined that the project's characteristics with incorporated conditions of approval do not rise to the level of necessitating a mitigated negative declaration. The staff report includes further information on this, and Anne Danforth is available to answer specific questions about CEQA. The appeal lists numerous points which are included on this slide. I'm not going to go over these point by point because there is a discussion in the staff report. As I mentioned, the appeal, which is Attachment Two, includes additional information on the appeal. And in addition, the supplemental information, which is included as Attachment Twelve, further expands on the points of the appeal. And the appeal packet, which was submitted on July thirtieth, was signed by sixty-two individuals in the Hidden Valley neighborhood expressing their opposition to the project. There are four options available to the council this evening as outlined on this slide. Option one is to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the project. Option two would be to modify the Planning Commission's action by changing the conditions of approval and associated findings for the design review and variance application. Option three is to approve the appeal and thereby overturning the Planning Commission's actions, approving the design review and variance application. And option four is to remand the action back to the Planning Commission with direction for its further review and determination. And that concludes the staff presentation, and myself and others are available for questions.
Thank you very much, Martha. Really appreciate all your work and your good succinct report. So this begins the official start of the public hearing, and I would first like to invite up the appellant. So those who are appealing the matter, we invite you to come on up and make that microphone fit right in front of your mouth if you can. Maybe somebody can help her.
Mayor Vasio, sorry. I was just gonna, Mayor Vasio.
Go ahead.
If there's, I didn't know if you wanted to ask for questions of staff before or after the appellant. It's up to you.
Oh, so do you want the council to address questions and public as well, or just?
Just for council.
All right.
Definitely.
So council, do any of you have any questions of staff at this time?
I, whoa. Is that better? I'm getting back feed. I just have a couple. Chief Martin, can you just kind of give the background from the fire department standpoint? I know that your department, or you'd sent a letter in support of the project. You just talk about the background, the evacuation that's been mentioned.
Sure.
Vegetation on that property, those types of items.
Yeah, sure. So we first, thank you, Councilmember Casissa and members of the council. We first met Central Marin Fire Department or first had conversations with the applicants in November of two thousand and twenty-three. They approached us with an idea or concept of a secondary driveway for family and occupant egress in the event of a fire. And so we looked and talked to them and gave them what our standard, objective standards were for a driveway. We then again didn't hear back from them for several months until they actually had something on paper. And we went back and forth working with the applicant until we found a design that worked for us. Part of that design looked at access for grades, meaning the steepness of the hillside, does that meet within our standard? Turning radiuses getting into the property. Per the objective standards, the driveway and the slope site quite didn't fit that objective standard. So we offered the applicant an option to look at our fire engine as a whole, basically put it into a computerized analysis where they can look at the size of the fire engine and determine whether our vehicle can actually make it up the hill and make the turning radiuses. The design that they provided actually exceeds the turning radiuses of our current fire engines that are being designed and that we currently have on-site today. Part of that process and evaluation also looked at how much fuel is coming off the hillside. Now, when we say fuel, it's the vegetation, it's the plants, it's the trees. And then the trees that are being removed are part of the process or part of the project for fire safety, because a lot of the trees that were found were in poor health, and most of those were undesirable trees, which we call fire-prone trees, which are primarily your California bay laurels, which carry a lot of oils within them that tend to propagate a lot of the wildland fires. Plus, and your arborists can probably talk to this, but your bay laurels also are the propagators for your sudden oak death that then carry and transmit that disease to those species as well. One of the things that the fire department always looks at is in the community and within structures is, does the occupants within a building have more than one way of getting out of the building to start with? And then, two, once they're outside, can we give them options on their evacuation routes, whether it's coming off of their property and/or out of a community? So for us, the fire department felt that this was in alignment with our vision of trying to create secondary accesses to everyone that we can for egress. So with that, this provides a secondary egress for the family or the occupants of that property coming off the backside onto Sausalito. The other thing that it does to, for us, it provides a better access point in the event of emergencies. So the original driveway up off of Quarter Madera Avenue provides probably approximately seven and a half to eight-minute response time from our engines. And their driveways, based on the home when it was built in the early two thousands, follows the standards of anywhere between ten and twelve feet wide, which is not desirable for homes that are located in a hillside community or within a wildland interface area. So for example, if the home was being built today, we would require sixteen-foot-wide driveways. So that was the standard that we gave to the applicant when they were designing that secondary driveway. Because for us, if you're putting in a driveway for egress, we want to be able to utilize it for access to the property in the event of a fire. So this actually provides and actually increases or reduces response times for about a minute or so to the property, depending on where our engine to the site is coming from. The other thing that it also does is the driveway being proposed actually puts us right exactly where the fire pumps are for the fire protection system within the property. So basically, we would have to drive, if we came in around Quarter Madera Avenue, we'd have to drive the entire circular driveway to the back of the property to try to access the entire fire equipment for that building. So this actually improves access for our firefighters accessing the property and also provides a secondary ingress for us for firefighting tactics. And it also provides, more importantly, secondary emergency egress for the property owner.
Thanks. I have more questions. Remember, wait till after the applicant appeals, after they give their presentation.
I just have two miscellaneous questions that came up throughout the presentation. First, my understanding is that the design has been modified to move the proposed gate out of the public right-of-way. I just want to confirm whether it is accurate that no portion of the public right-of-way would be made inaccessible to the public as part of this project. Is that correct?
Portions of the right-of-way would be inaccessible during construction of the project, but then if the project is approved and the driveway is constructed, the public would continue to have access throughout the entirety of the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was, I thought I had recalled that our tree ordinance requires trees that trigger a replacement requirement to be replaced at a three-to-one ratio. Is that not correct?
That is not correct. There is no standard requirement in our tree ordinance that speaks to replacement planting, and it's evaluated on a permit-by-permit basis. I spoke with a couple of planning staff that process most of our tree permits, and they said it's typically around fifty percent of the applications have replacement planting. Not all projects require replacement planting. It has to do with the site conditions, and a lot of trees that are removed are in kind of the more wooded areas, and sometimes there's not adequate space to plant new trees. So it's kind of evaluated on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Down here, Rosa.
Chief Martin, I have a question about, there's a point on Alta Terrace that is going to be widened, I understand, as it comes off of the driveway and onto the public right-of-way. And can you talk a little bit about what that's going, how that will benefit the fire engines?
Yes. So for those of you that have driven up Alta Terrace, you can tell it's probably about a ten-foot-wide roadway, which is what we call pre-existing non-conforming. So it's pretty tight as we get up there. And the difficulties with narrow roadways is we can probably drive up a ten-foot roadway, but then we can't get out of the vehicle to be able to then start mitigating an emergency. So you can imagine a firefighter trying to get out of a steep hillside that's ten-foot-wide roadway. When they step out, they're going to fall off that hillside. So hence why we need wider roadways. So what this does when widening the, basically right before the hairpin turn or the switchback on Alta Terrace, if you begin to widen that, what that does, it provides better access point for the fire truck to be able to then try to make that hairpin turn for those residents that are living at the top of Alta Terrace. Because that's a big challenge right now is making that hairpin turn. And it's difficult in a private vehicle, as alone as you can imagine a twenty-eight to thirty-foot or thirty-foot-long fire truck.
Thank you. And then I did have a question on the new design, and I don't know if this is better for the representatives. By moving back the, oh, this is terrible. Can you still hear me if I'm back this far? Because it's talking to me too much. Does that affect any of the tree plan at all?
It does not. It would not result in any additional trees being removed, and those redwoods that are close to the lower portion would continue to be preserved.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions right now.
And Jim?
Yes, when we're doing this appeal, are we making a decision about the original design or the proposed modified design? And when do we have to figure out which one we're talking about?
So if the council decides to approve the project, you could provide direction if you had a preference on the design, whether it be the original design that was approved by the Planning Commission in May, or if you could provide direction that this alternate design is the preferred, and then the plans would be modified and a building permit submitted to the town would reflect this alternate design?
Okay, I'm going to hold my questions for now, and we will invite up the appellant. So those who are, thank you for your patience. Sorry for the up and down. We'd like to give you ten full minutes, which is a really long time in council meeting time, to present your argument, and we appreciate you being here. And if I can just say, first of all, in order to make the meeting go well, we're going to try to refrain from ex parte comments or clapping or anything in order to keep things moving along, if that's okay. Thank you. Love for you to introduce yourself.
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay.
You might want to get a little closer to the microphone.
Is that okay?
As close as you can get.
Right there?
There you go.
Okay. Oh. So Mayor Vasio, Town Council members and staff. My name is Karen Lawrence, and I'm here on behalf of on behalf of a large group of concerned residents from Hidden Valley, Chapman Drive, and Sausalito Streets. To begin with, we do appreciate that the eight hundred Quarter Madera applicants want to improve their home and protect their families. We all want to do that. As a community, we're focused on the whole, the one hundred and twenty households and the environment around us. And we take the risk of fire very seriously. We're a certified firewise community and part of the Quarter Madera N R G program, and that takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of commitment from everyone. We believe that the proposal for a second driveway is of no benefit to our community and instead puts us at risk. Therefore, we ask that the Town Council uphold our appeal and deny- Therefore, we ask that the town council uphold our appeal and deny the driveway project. Permission to build the second driveway should only be given if the driveway meets legal requirements and town code. Yet for this project, the variance has been improperly scoped and even so doesn't meet criteria. As Chief Martin mentioned, the driveway is not fully compliant with fire standards and the town code. This project converts public land into a private driveway, and it conflicts with more policies in the general plan than it upholds. Finally, it would set a precedent for large-scale projects to be approved with narrowly defined variance requirements, threatening the character and planning integrity of the town. It isn't just about a driveway. It's about how we protect our policies, our hillsides, and our public trust. Slide. Next slide, please. What we're talking about here is a massive driveway. It's completely out of the ordinary. You all know the stats. Martha just took you through them. It would be built on a 52% slope, requiring 12-plus-foot retaining walls, remove 42 mature trees with only 10 replaced in the construction area, and require licensing of 3,000 square feet of town-owned private right of way. The areas on this map that are highlighted in red and green, it's the proposed driveway and the construction road, are the length of almost two football fields. And the grading required to result that would result from this is 100 to 125 dump trucks full of material. Next slide, please. For design review, the project currently requires a variance for retaining walls. It's important to recognize that the walls aren't the issue alone. A variance is being used to greenlight an entire driveway project that depends on those walls and the use of the right of way to even function. Without those elements, the driveway would not be feasible. Approval of a variance for just the retaining walls would be set a dangerous precedent, approving a large-scale private project under the narrow justification of retaining wall Here's the next slide. So here's an aerial view of the property that you guys can see. The property line is highlighted in gold, the three hydrants in green, and the circular driveway is in blue, and it provides access to exit the house from both the Quarter Madera and Mill Valley sides, and provides three escape routes down the hill. In 2022, the applicants invited Chief Martin to the site to review the fire safety improvements they could make to the property. And Chief Martin did did identify a couple of pinch points in the current driveway that might impact, you know, emergency response, but it wasn't going to prevent response. So just looking at the box corner on the right, that is the second driveway. I'd like to point out that the driveway doesn't fully meet fires fire code standards, as Chief Martin said. He's already pointed out the turning radius. In addition to that, it doesn't meet the the town standards for slope. There's a section that's at a 25% slope when our with a grade requirement is 18. So I would imagine fire trucks may have a little bit hard time maneuvering, but that would be up to Chief Martin to say. The applicants who have offered this driveway as a second second egress for the community, however, they've offered it with a locked gate. If they're really serious about helping us, why don't they grant us an EVA, the ability to unlock the gate, and an easement to exit the property through the circular driveway in an emergency? No one is going to go to a locked gate if there's a fire. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. Back one. Thank you. And as Chief Martin said, he is in support of this project. And I think that honestly, he should be. It's his sole job to make sure that we are safe from fire, and it's a huge job, and we all appreciate him. And he's probably really happy that it's not his job to weigh the potential risks of fire against the assured environmental and community impact of a project like this. Next slide. Now, we're going to go back to this idea that the project should be considered holistically, not just for the retaining walls. Quarter Madera has four requirements for variance approval. This project as a whole does not meet those criteria. Specifically, there is no practical difficulty or hardship. The applicants have a safe and reliable way to exit the property today. Criteria also state no special privileges be granted, yet this project would grant several special privileges, and just the fact that it includes a variance for an unrequired, unnecessary driveway should be enough to stop it. The final criteria is that it can't be detrimental to public public welfare. This criteria ensures the project has a minor or neutral impact and is not disruptive, and yet it will be hugely disruptive to our entire community and change its character forever. In summary, this project fails the test. Next slide. We also want to point out that the project is inconsistent with town objectives. The staff report calls out that this project is in compliance with the general plan, but it's actually out of compliance more often than it's in compliance, as you can see from the right-hand side of the slide in red. Next slide, please. Really quickly, I want to touch on just a few other community concerns that I think you'll hear more about tonight: safety, environmental impact, and public access. Next slide. So as you know, we have roads that have some questionable stability, and we're concerned they're not going to withstand the traffic required during construction. The result could could be that some of us can't get out of our homes. We're also concerned about increased traffic up and down the narrow streets and drainage. We're worried about how the new added 175-foot retaining wall will redirect traffic or water runoff. Next slide. As mentioned, we, along with several experts, disagree with staff that the CEQA exemption should apply. You've seen the letters submitted by Andrea Williams, as well as Barbara Saltzman from the Audubon Society calling this out. Additionally, Barbara's letter states, "It's shocking that two-thirds of of trees on the property will be removed to build a driveway access road. We've not seen a project proposed to remove so many trees in years, and the application for the last one was denied by the Marin County Planning Commission." Next slide, please. Post-construction, Alta Woods will be left with three retaining walls and a ground that will be 30 to 40% covered in gravel. And I might add, we don't agree that the it will look anything like those pictures that were shown earlier today. Furthermore, we disagree with the staff report on visual impact. The driveway's retaining walls will be visible throughout our community, on the hills from our homes, and and we have many of those views from our homes directly. Again, you might think some of the things I'm talking about are outside the scope of tonight's topic, but it's not. This is all related to a single project serving a single residence. Last slide. So again, we ask that you uphold the appeal. This project fails to meet town and fire code requirements and puts our community at risk. Again, it would set a precedent for large-scale projects to be approved with narrowly defined variance requirements, threatening the very character and planning integrity of this town. This isn't about one driveway. It's about how we protect our policies, our hillsides, and our public trust. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Okay, thank you all. All right, next, I'd like to call up the applicant, whoever is representing the applicant tonight, if you want to come up and give us 10 minutes on why you think we should deny the appeal and approve your project.
Make sure everyone can hear me here. Thank you, Mayor Vazio. Members of the council, my name is Sean Kennings. I'm a city planning consultant with LAK Associates. We appreciate the time and consideration that both you and your staff have given this project over the past two years. Tonight, we ask that you deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve. Since the official start in November 2023, the town staff has vetted the project thoughtfully and carefully, and your planning commission has approved the project. It is supported by and was a collaboration with the Central Marin Fire Department to improve fire and emergency safety for both the homeowners and the neighbors at no cost to the town. In addition to the collaboration with the fire department, the applicants have made meaningful changes to the project over the process, which was a direct result of extensive community feedback. Next slide. 800 Quarter Madera is a large, unique hillside property, over 11 acres in size, with approximately 1,200 large trees and just one single point of ingress and egress. Next slide. The purpose, the primary purpose of the project is to provide a means of secondary egress for the residents. However, this driveway and the associated improvements will have significant positive impacts for the family residing at Haight Under Quarter Madera, as well as the rest of the neighborhood, primarily by enhancing fire safety and emergency access, but also by reducing traffic on Chapman Drive and Alta Way, and by improving surface drainage and hillside stability in the area. It also aligns with the Quarter Madera Climate Adaption Assessment for Fire Safety and Evacuation Routes. Next slide. This is the existing driveway. It does not meet current Quarter Madera Fire Department codes and is challenging for emergency vehicles to access. You can see that on one side of the driveway is a steep slope, and on the other side is flanked by large trees whose roots are supporting the hillside. Widening the current driveway to meet codes would cause a significantly greater environmental impact than the proposed project, and it wouldn't solve the primary purpose of providing secondary egress. Next slide. These photos are from the mid-1990s, where a storm on 800 Quarter Madera had 17 large trees fall on the property and had multiple driveway obstructions. Next slide. In recent storms, the family's egress from the Quarter Madera Avenue exit was also completely blocked. These obstructions took one week to clear. Big storms are common in this area, and big fires are common in California. For a family with small children like the homeowners of 800 Quarter Madera, having a second exit across 11-plus acres would make a life-or-death difference in an emergency. Next slide. The approach to this project has been carefully designed by Sherwood Design Engineers, a leader in sustainable civil engineering, to be the least impactful with regards to grading, tree removal, and drainage concerns. Sherwood has coordinated with the Town Department of Public Works from the beginning, and the result is a design that addresses enhanced civil, structural, and geotechnical aspects. And importantly, it provides enhanced emergency access, fire safety, and vegetation management. Next slide. As you've heard, the Central Marin Fire Department supports this project. The project team engaged the fire department very early on for feedback and their wish list for other fire safety improvements to the area. Several improvements were added in response, which resulted in better emergency vehicle access to the top of 800 Quarter Madera and the existing fire hydrants and wells located on the property, better emergency vehicle access to the homes at the top of Alta Terrace, and a new evacuation route, both for the family at 800 Quarter Madera and potential evacuation route for neighbors up to Camino Alto if routes from below were blocked. Next slide. These are additional improvements that the homeowners have made at the cost in a response to the fire department feedback and neighbor requests. Uphill neighbors on Alta Terrace requested widening of the hairpin turn so that it would be easier for the package delivery trucks to make the turn and would be less likely to hit a beloved cluster of redwood trees that you see there in the middle. The fire department also suggested that the design would help improve emergency vehicle access to this area if the hairpin turn was widened, resurfaced that portion of the road, and built a retaining wall on the downhill side of the road with sufficient strength to support a fire truck. Please note that the project only connects the paper road within the public portion of Alta Terrace, whereas the the family would never use the private portion of Alta Terrace to the to the west and at the bottom of that exhibit. Next slide. The civil and geotechnical engineers worked together to design the drainage plans. The project's engineered drainage solutions for surface water will actually be an improvement over the current conditions, especially for the neighbors to the north and downslope from the Paper Street area. Next slide. The approved project represents the design team's efforts to minimize disturbance of trees and grading. Nearly all of the trees proposed removal are in poor or fair health and located in an area that is too densely populated, where they are struggling to compete for resources. These will be replaced with new, large-box-sized, fire-safe trees for screening along the driveway there on the right, and for additional root support on the Chapman hillside there on the left. Next slide. Apart from safety enhancements, another benefit to the approved approved driveway is that it will take the family's daily trips from Chapman Drive and Alta Way, which are notoriously narrow and congested. In contrast, the segment of Alta Terrace that would receive the family's daily trips is short, and most of it is wide enough for two-way traffic. Next slide. The Planning Commission made the findings to approve a rear yard setback variance for retaining walls over three feet height. The findings were made because of the steep slope, because of the large setback for a unique large property, and to minimize further grading and further tree disturbance. Next slide. This project has had extensive community outreach. In my experience, as a project planner for 20-plus years, this has been one of the most extensive public outreach efforts that I've seen, starting very early on in the process. The owner's representative has been available throughout the process by email, phone, and in person, and has documented all the efforts to outreach to the neighbors. Next slide. The homeowners have been responsive to this community feedback. Along the way, they have made modifications, site studies, compromises, and other additions to benefit the community. The slide lists some of those examples. The conditions from approval of the Planning Commission have also been added a number of restrictions to the project to address community concerns. And most recently, as Martha pointed out, the town retained a wildlife biologist, and three additional conditions of approval have been added. Next slide. So since the project's approval at the Planning Commission 4 to 1 on May 27, the applicants have continued to approve the project. Next slide. Landscape architect Joni Janeki has been engaged to develop the aesthetic design for the approved driveway. Please note that apart from the improvements, the paper road will be restored to the same as or better than its current conditions. Next slide. We've selected materials, a color scheme, and landscaping strategy to make the driveway blend in with the natural surroundings. These are the renderings showing how the final project is expected to look. Next slide. The applicants were very thoughtful about the vegetation selected, using fire-smart Marin planting recommendations, choosing plants suitable for Marin's climate and soils, and considering areas of maintenance, low volatile oil content, drought tolerance, and non-invasive characteristics. Next slide. In a short time, the driveway will disappear into the natural setting. Even the appellant's acknowledged that the neighborhood access and use of the paper road will not change. The appellant's did express concerns about removing the chain that's currently at the beginning of the paper road and opening the area up, referencing incidents in the past where individuals have used the back area of the road for drug use, dumping, and other risky behavior. We acknowledge the history of these incidents and plan to reinstall the chain just past the driveway entrance and maintain the gate at the end to prevent potential future abuse of the area. Next slide. Lastly, the alternative design. Within the last two weeks, we've received a request from the council responding to the collective neighbor feedback. Is there a way to move more of the driveway entrance off the paper road and back onto private property? Next slide. In response, Sherwood has developed an alternative design, which removes 52% of the approved driveway walls and concrete off the paper road and pushes them back beyond the property line shown in red. The gate is now entirely located behind the property line as well, and this modification requires some adjustment of wall heights in few places as marked.
Okay, did you have a lot more in your presentation, or were you at the?
Okay, did you have a lot more in your presentation, or were you at the...
Here's the planned view of the alternative design. It shows areas of reduced impact into the right-of-way. It's better for everybody. Last slide. We ask you that you deny the appeal. The fire department supports the project.
I'd like to call order, please.
Staff has made the findings. There are minimal impacts to the paper road area, and the project delivers public safety at no cost to the town.
Thank you very much.
And our project team is here if you have any questions of us.
Yes, we can go back to those again. And I just want to say to the audience that we had a meeting room this full, even fuller, and it was people who were looking at the fact of having a six-story building across from their homes, and everybody was polite and civil, even though the stakes were very high and the emotions ran high, too. So I hope to see that same kind of civility. I think Corto Madera meetings are kind of known for that. We're not Fairfax. Oh, no, I'm not supposed to say that. Okay, so at this point in time, we come back to the council to see if they have any questions. Now, this is just questions for clarification. The council will hold its comments about the project until after the public has a chance to speak up. So at this point, are there questions, Jim?
Yes. Does anyone know who has keys to the midway gate on the paper road?
The property owner of 800 Corto Madera Avenue has keys.
Typically with the fire department, when they put a gate across a roadway, we will definitely have access to it as well.
No, no, I'm talking about there's a gate there and that.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about. The chain-linked gate. We have access to that.
Okay, good.
Okay, is that all, Jim, at this moment? Just to follow up on that, Public Works has a key to that gate as well?
I don't believe Public Works does, but I'll let them speak. I know within the last seven years, I believe the property manager or the property management company has been managing that paper road.
Okay, thank you. The tall, handsome man standing at the microphone is Chris Good, who is our new Public Works Director. You have a key to that gate?
I'm not aware.
Okay. All right, Rosa, any questions?
This question is about the water management. So with this new design, I think...
Hold your mic. Okay. And what is your name?
Drew Norton. Thank you. Okay, so I'm just curious, because water is one of those really, you know, difficult-to-manage things. So do you have a sense now, I don't know if you've observed the water flow downhill, as to how much of the water flowing downhill from that property would currently, you'd currently think contributes to ponding or any kind of, you know, need for sump pumps or anything at this time?
The current hillside runoff that drains off of the private property onto the paper road, there's a portion of that, and almost a majority of all of that runoff goes to the downhill neighbors. Some of that water currently infiltrates into the ground, is captured by the trees, and evaporates. And on heavier events, that currently runs down across the Paper Street into the neighbor's yards.
Okay. And because, you know, there's that contribution to whatever is going down, and then there's water on the ground, and there's neighbors who maybe are a little higher down below, and that goes into someone's yard, I'm just wondering if you have any sense of, once your new system might be in place, are they going to be able to notice a difference?
Yes, with the proposed improvements, we will be cutting off all of the drainage runoff that currently flows down the neighbor, the private property, and onto the Paper Street, and be managing that with systems that's going to both retain and detain that runoff, so there's no net increase of runoff. So the only water that will be flowing on those downhill neighbors will be the water that is currently on their own property.
Okay. Thank you. Let me see, do I have another water? I don't think I have another water question, but I do have a tree question. Who should I direct that to?
Yeah, Doug Wildman with Bartlett Tree Experts, Bartlett Consulting.
Thank you. So I'm wondering, with the new trees, in their infancy, they need a lot more water than when they are a little more mature. Is there an irrigation system plan for that?
You'd have to ask the applicant. I'm certain there will be.
If you could come to the microphone, please, if you're going to address the group. I want to make sure everybody can hear. Is everyone hearing better now in the back? You doing okay? All right, thank you.
Yes, we have a landscape architect, and that will be built into the plans, some form of irrigation for the new plantings.
Okay, and then another question, too, is that I see that the planning commission asks that a larger tree size be chosen, but sometimes trees, when they are larger, it's a little harder for them to survive. So I'm just wondering how that's going to be managed?
My understanding is that staff has put a condition of approval that requires sort of maintenance and management of those trees for a period of time so that they regrow and establish themselves.
Okay, and one more tree question. So when trees are cut down, there's a lot of root that is left behind. You know, you cut off the tree, but the root is still there. And so this is more of a tree specialist question, is do those leftover roots have any ability to reinforce the soil?
I believe that that is true. They would be used for stabilization of the hillside as needed. Obviously, in areas where the driveway is going to be, they have to be removed, and the stability, the structural engineering of the wall itself would provide that stability.
Thank you. Just to make sure I don't have anything else. I might save these questions. Yeah, go ahead. We're going to save these.
Okay, down here, Fred.
Yeah, thanks. It seemed like there's some disagreement between those that are appealing and staff with respect to, I think, general policy, the general policy, and also the variance, and also town policy. Can Martha, can maybe you or Ann, address that?
I'll start with the general plan policy. Let me know if there's something I can do to make this sound more tolerable. The general plan has many different goals, policies, and programs, and they do not always harmonize together perfectly. So this case is an example. You could argue, and the council could find, that the project is not, does not further several of the policies and programs that are announced, that are enunciated in the general plan. However, the general plan also has a series of policies and programs that are directed at improving public safety. So they actually speak directly to improving evacuation routes for residents and to improve the accessibility of properties, and particularly hillside areas, for emergency vehicles. The council's job here is to balance all of these different policies and programs, and to decide what on balance is compatible with the general plan. And the council can decide that a project is compatible with the general plan, even if it appears not to further one or two of the specific goals or objectives. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. So at this point, does staff feel comfortable that we're in compliance with the general plan, with this project?
I believe so, and I think the professional planning staff does.
Okay, and same thing with the variance. You feel comfortable that we're in compliance with the requirements and the findings on the variance? I'm kind of splitting this into design versus variance.
The variance problem is more complicated. There are policy, there are rules about variances that require, for example, that the variance is necessary to avoid imposing a hardship on the property owner that is not faced by other properties in the vicinity. They also has to be a finding that it will not unduly impact the public. So if the council, I should say, the other property owners in the vicinity, so if the council finds that there is no hardship if the project, if the variance is denied, or conversely, if the council finds that this would unduly harm the public in the vicinity, then the council could deny the variance on those bases. You have to be able to make the findings, and only the council is in a position to weigh the evidence and decide whether there's a hardship if the variance is granted, excuse me, if the variance is denied, or if there's an impact on public welfare if the variance is granted. Those are findings of fact for you to make.
And then one other question also, I think Eli Price said this before, and I'm sorry, I may have to repeat it. On the second alternative driveway was pushed back, that does not go in, does not encroach on public right-of-way where the gate starts?
I would have to defer to Martha.
With the alternate design, the entire gate would be on private property. There would still be some retaining walls in the right-of-way, and there also would be, the approach to the driveway would obviously still be in the right-of-way as well.
Okay, all right, thanks. I may have more, but thanks for now.
Thank you. I've got two questions related to stability. First, has a geotechnical report already been prepared, or is that yet to come?
The applicant did prepare a geotechnical report, which they included as part of their supplemental information. It was exhibit to that. So the geotechnical report includes soil analysis, and they probably could speak more to this, but they did tests of the existing soil to determine its capacity for absorbing water. And the geotechnical report would be submitted to the town at part of the building permit and would be carefully reviewed by the Public Works Department.
Okay, thank you. And then, second question, the paper road up there, at least, appears to be supported at its edge by sandbags. I have no idea whether those sandbags are actually structural or not, but I wanted to see if we can get just like a narrative description of what the current sort of structural stability of that roadway is, or that paper road is, and a sense of what steps would be taken if this project were approved to ensure that it has enough integrity to sustain construction vehicles and construction activities.
So I'll answer part of this, and I think the applicant probably can speak more to it. So the applicant has proposed a construction roadway, which is about, I think, around 400, 500 feet, and as part of that, they would be removing soil and then compacting soil, and then adding a fabric to it, and then adding like a base rock, which would be able to withstand construction traffic and vehicles on that paper street. But they can provide more kind of technical answer as far as the system that they've evaluated.
I believe you're talking about the sandbags that are under Alta Terrace currently that were previously installed?
Yes, I guess I am. Thanks.
That's part of the public right-of-way. That's part of the town's road. We observe that there's no deferential settlement within the pavement, which means that they're performing, and the owner has committed to any impacts to that wall, that retaining system will be addressed post-construction or during construction.
So it sounds like I misremembered where the sandbags were, and they are under Alta Terrace and not under the paper road? So then my question is just with regards to the paper road itself, where I understand there will be construction vehicles and equipment being staged, is that likely to require any sort of retainage to support the weight of construction?
Yeah, there's currently a less-than-three-foot-high retaining wall that runs along the downhill side of the Paper Street, which is required to withstand a fire truck apparatus.
Okay, so then, okay, so if that retaining wall that's currently there is enough to...
It's not there now. It will be, it's proposed.
Oh, okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just one quick question. Just for educational purposes, can somebody define what is meant by "paper street"?
Which is public right-of-way.
It must have been a good question.
I know. Who wants to take this? Thank you. A paper street, I don't know the exact question, but basically, when they develop an area, they leave space to build roads, and sometimes in the development, certain roads don't get built, but the area remains in the public right-of-way. So that's kind of how paper streets come to be.
All right, thanks.
So the terms are interchangeable? Paper street and public right-of-way?
It's all public right-of-way.
It's all public right-of-way? Okay.
I think the paper refers to that it lives on a map somewhere, not in a physical location.
Right, okay.
Madam, may I be heard on that question, Len Rifflin? Hi, good evening, Madam, and members of the council. So paper street, right-of-way, they aren't necessarily interchangeable. Paper street just means there was a subdivision map. This one was from 1906, and there was a roadway drawn on that piece of paper, and it just never got developed for the last 118 years or so, or 19, 119 years, since that map was recorded. And a right-of-way would mean that the town has a public right to use that street, whether it was developed or not, but that's what it means, but they're not necessarily one and the same. You could have a paper street and not a right-of-way, or they could be the same. Sorry, but that's a more technical answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I just have another question from Jim, okay?
Could you call up the charts, like, 11A, so that we can actually see what we're talking about with the paper street?
You want to call up a slide?
Yeah.
Okay, do you know what number it was, or what the...
11A.
11A? Do you have them numbered that way? You might just want to scroll through them. He'll say stop when you get to it. Is that possible? The appellants' presentation, right? The appellants' presentation? Or was it staff?
It's one of the...
Okay, we're looking here. Hold it up. Let's hold it up. Whoever has this drawing, no, hold it up to them. Familiar?
Only I added grief.
I think Martha's got it.
It's slide 25. Okay.
Well, she's looking at the, Chief Martin, there's no way you get fire trucks on that paper road, right? Or can you?
Even I can answer that.
Don't use it.
Is that it?
Slide was not in the original presentation. It was a backup slide, but it's showing the proposed construction road in the hatchmarks, and then there's the turnaround area. So the distance of this construction road is about just under 550 feet, and then the right-of-way area extends about another 100 feet past what's shown as the turnaround.
And this was the slide I wanted to see, too, because we'd gone through it really quickly, and I didn't understand a little bit about what was happening down there, not during construction, but after. And I'm just wondering if the applicant can explain a little bit about what your plan is to restore it to as-is or better condition when it's all said and done?
The current approach is the area that's cross-hatched in black beyond the area that's accessible to the public, that during construction, that will have a base material down that can handle truck traffic across it. And at the end, there'll be a stockpile, and... Thank you. Though that doesn't work, does it? Okay.
You can grab your microphone and walk up and point.
I can do that.
Let's put it on, let's get a sound. We do, it's just a tech guy. We need a designer.
So this is the edge of the proposed improvements for the Paper Street Road driveway, and the current access to the gate is about to this point. And the current access to the gate is about to this point here. This will be a construction, construction access road, which will have a base material put down during construction, stockpile location there so that they can take spoils from the construction activity, stockpile it there and, and truck that off as well as using that as a staging ground. When this is, when the construction process is complete, this will be restored back to its native earth, the earthen surface coverings and, and restored with the planting. So there will be a post vegetation plan and restoration plan for this zone that's impacted during construction.
And when will that plan be developed?
That is part of the requirements that the town would issue as part of the building permits.
Before permits? Sorry.
During the building, review process. Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions at this point? Jim?
When you're restoring it, if you're putting in retaining walls and stuff like that to do the construction trucks, will the retaining walls remain?
The only retaining wall within the paper street that will remain, there's two. One is there is an extension of the private retaining walls from the applicant's driveway that's currently as part of this design within the, the paper street. And the modified version of the driveway layout, yep, the modified version of the driveway layout will reduce that. The other wall is the less than three foot high wall that flanks the downhill side of the improved driveway in the paper street.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the dark black line that's sort of on the edge of that check space. Is that going to be retaining wall? I guess really what I'm saying is if you're stabilizing the hill for trucks.
Pedestrian pathway that would be accessible when construction is not occurring. So it's a five foot wide pedestrian area.
It also represents our erosion control measures that we're going to be putting up on the downhill side to prevent sediment transfer across the, the driveway.
And does, does that five foot passageway go all the way to the end of the, of the?
No, it'll swing up at the existing gate.
But the construction vehicles open that gate to go through and do the work below?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So it is time if we can take a break from our questions. We can still ask more questions later. It's just, we want to get to the public comments. So if I can see a show of hands of how many of you would like to speak tonight? Okay, we have a fair number and I'm hoping, can we, first of all, I want you to know that I know that most of us read every single letter you wrote. And I want you to know, you're all brilliant. They were the most thoughtful, articulate letters, and I encouraged everybody to read all of them. And I think that we have. So don't feel you need to, I mean, we want to hear what you want to say, but i- if you're becoming repetitive with somebody who spoke before you, hey, if you've got any great ideas for a compromise or what you would put up with and what you, what is your priority? Let us know that too during your comments. So I'd like you to line up in, I mean, you don't have to all get up, but let's make sure that we don't have a delay. And shall we do two minutes or three, you guys? It's a lot of people. So we're going to try to do two minutes. If you really think you need a little more, give me a three at the beginning and I'll let you go to two minutes 15. How's that? Okay. And, and, and if you have comments in writing, they can submit those as well. Okay. All right. So let's, uh, let's begin. Everybody good to start? Got your listening ears on? Okay. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
All right. Mayor and town council members. I am Julie Bush. I live at 440 Sausalito Street, one of over 120 households that will be impacted, some permanently by the proposed second driveway. As a constituent, I respectfully ask that you approve the appeal. I purchased 440 Sausalito Street in 1999 specifically because of its world-class scenic views and proximity to open space. Since then, I've lived side by side with generation after generation of wildlife. The area in question is rich with plant and animal species. Uniquely tucked away from traffic, it's a safe place for animals to birth and raise their babies, an essential part of a precious and precarious cycle of life. Fortunately, Cordermadera's general plan provides clear vision and guidelines for land use, conservation, safety and community character. Among its five fundamental purposes, the general plan quote, enables the planning commission and the town council to make informed actions on environmental protection and provides a basis for evaluating whether private development proposals are in harmony with Cordermadera's vision, end quote. The applications are not in harmony with Cordermadera's vision. The plan states that preservation and protection of the natural environment have been a priority. Maintaining natural terrain and vegetation preserves the natural and scenic value of open space and wildlife habitat. It says scenic resources are among the town's important community assets. The area affected in the applications exemplifies exactly what the general plan aims to protect.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, you're not finished yet?
Almost.
Okay. Real quick.
Very close. The plan calls on the town to manage the development review process to promote resource conservation and sustainability. I'll skip some of this. Just say, how is it possible that the removal of mature redwood trees is under consideration? Finally, the plan says we must conserve, restore and enhance areas containing important habitat. Please approve the appeal. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay. Up next. And if you could introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Sure. My name is Mary Cass. I live with my wife Will Bureide at 11 Alta Way. And we oppose the application for a variance to build the driveway at 800 Cordermadera. Our opposition centers on a fundamental question. Is the driveway project truly necessary to protect both the residents of 800 Cordermadera Avenue and the wider community in, in the event of an emergency? Enough to justify transferring over 3,000 square feet of town-owned public right of way in Alta Woods to essentially private use? According to the Oxford English Dictionary, necessary refers to that which is indispensable and essential, something absolutely required. This project requires considerable reengineering of a steep hillside that you've read about. The environmental impact would be significant and irreversible, permanently altering the hillside ecosystem and character of Alta Woods. Beyond the environmental costs, there will be sweeping and prolonged effects to the community. The neighborhood will have to endure at least 10 months of consistent disruptive construction, noise, dust, heavy equipment, intermittent road closures and continuous construction traffic on narrow roads. This will fundamentally disrupt daily life, compromising the safety and serenity of our neighborhood. This project is not just about building a driveway on private property. It demands the transformation of town-owned land for essentially private benefit. Such a profound, permanent change must meet the highest standard of necessity. We believe this project falls well short. The costs to the community and environment outweigh any claimed benefits, especially since the requirement for the secondary access has not been compellingly demonstrated. For these reasons, we urge you to approve the appeal and reject the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Harlock, 533 Redwood, and I am in support of the appeal. Bottom line, I don't think any hardship or lack of convenience can justify the tremendous impacts that this is having on a tremendous number of neighbors out of a, uh, just for the convenience of one property owner. Fire safety could certainly be improved. And the fire chief has acknowledged that this is not necessary. It's desirable, but not necessary, but there are other mitigations. But what I'd like to focus on briefly is the fact for the council's benefit that this does not meet the variance findings that have to be made that are set forth in state law and also in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance says variances are intended to resolve practical difficulties or unnecessary physical hardships. And the following findings actually have to be made for any variance to be approved. What are the special circumstances that apply to this property? The client's representative says the existing driveway does not meet current emergency response standards. Besides being contrary to the fire chief's testimony, this is hard to grasp. The site is accessed by two well-maintained two-lane roads to the north and south, Camino Alto and Cordermadera Avenue, and the third street Chapman Road adjacent to the main entrance. In terms of fire protection onsite, the property is especially fortunate. It contains a main house of rammed earth construction with a metal roof, an exterior fire sprinkler system, three onsite fire hydrants, and most importantly, a paved driveway that encircles the primary site.
Michael, I'm sorry, we are 45 seconds over, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't, the beep is quite quiet. We used to, we used to play the music to send you off, but we've, we've gotten.
Okay. I will, I will wrap up.
Real quickly, please.
The finding that I think is most difficult to make is explain how the variance will not constitute a, a grant of special privilege. It is hard to see how this project is not a grant of special privilege, given there are no properties in the vicinity that have the luxury of a second driveway solely for the convenience of the owners, including Skywalker Ranch on Lucas Valley Road. As owners of magnificent view hilltop properties realize the privilege of being on top means the need to go down usually on circuitous inconvenient, inconvenient roads.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. Thanks very much. And up next?
Hello, my name is Jesse Wagner. My family lives at 252 Sausalito Street. My family is not in support of the driveway. I do believe it will have an impact on our lives. I feel there should be more transparency with this. I see a, a large group of community members, people that live here that are coming out to say we do not agree with this plan. I don't really see who lives at 800 Cordermadera Avenue. And that's because 800 Cordermadera Avenue, I believe, is owned by Tiberius, which is a corporation that is based out of Manhattan and Dubai. So my fear is that this is going to be made into a resort, which will then increase traffic. I don't understand why there's a second driveway. I think there, there needs to be some sort of accountability to who is actually coming up with this project. Is this a company or is it going to be somebody who's going to be a resident? Are they going to change the property? That is my fear, and I think that will impact my family greatly. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Saul Gonzalez. I am the property manager at 800 Cordermadera, a position that I have held for past five owners, including the current owners. I have spent my career, the past 36 years caretaking of this property. I want to give you some history about the paper road adjacent to the property. When I first came to work at 800 Cordermadera, that entire paper road was so covered with thorny blackberry, a scotch broom, poison oak and trash that nobody could use it for anything. Then in 1996, the owner at that time asked me and the other groundskeeper to clear out all of the hostile vegetation from the paper road. It was very hard work. It took a team of us a long time, but we did it. And since then, I and the groundskeeper team at 800 Cordermadera have been maintaining the entire road. We remove those hostile plants. When people dump old refrigerators and other large trash objects, we take them away and dispose of them. We clear out the pampas grass and do other ongoing fire safety management for the paper road. We collaborate with the fire department. Nobody else pays for, for does this work. The town does not. Other neighbors do not. It is a service that 800 Cordermadera has been providing for the community for decades. The current owners are a nice family. They are continuing on a long tradition of 800 Cordermadera, acting as a good source of the natural area and good community members. I see neighbors speaking about him with such anger, some hatred in meetings with our staff. They have said things like they are carpetbaggers. We will find who they are and then their kids will be bullied at school. Let the family burn. This family just wants to make sure that they can be safe in a disaster. They want the neighborhood to be safer. At the end of all this, the paper road will be just as nice as has been since we first cleared out. We intend to continue to maintain it that way. With improvements, it will be better. Let's focus on what matters here. Let's all be good neighbors. Thank you very much.
Dear mayor, town council members and staff, my name is Bonnie Brown. Dear mayor.
Oh, better, better. Great.
Council members and staff, my name is Bonnie Brown, and I have lived with my family on the west side of Sausalito Street since 2013. We are immediately downslope of the 800 Cordermadera Avenue property. It's a peaceful, close-knit community, home to longtime residents, families with young children, hikers, bikers and dog walkers. People look out for each other and care deeply about the national, the natural environment and the shared responsibility of protecting it. Our road is not built for the load of industrial traffic that this driveway calls for. Sausalito Street is a narrow, winding residential road already under strain. It was never designed to accommodate the volume and type of vehicles proposed for this secondary driveway. On page 250 from the preliminary construction plan, it lists the machinery which will be going up and down Sausalito Street and Alta Terrace necessary for this project. Here's the list. Backhoes, dump trucks, stump grinders, wood chippers, excavators, lumbar rebar delivery trucks, concrete pump trucks, concrete mixer trucks, bulldozers, compactors, asphalt and concrete material trucks, vibratory plate compactors, steel wheel rollers and delivery and service trucks. This list does not include the traffic of the contractors and overseers who are managing the project. This is not building just a driveway. The scope of this construction, its duration, scale and disruption will significantly, will significantly impact our lives and homes for almost a year and beyond if there's some instability in the soil. If the family who is proposing this project lived on Sausalito Street, Alta Way or Alta Terrace, I believe they would object just as strongly as all of us. And I don't know if any of us would attempt an emergency exit through a locked gate or climb a chain link fence with barbed wire on top as an escape route from a fire. We are not opposed to thoughtful development. Our community is renovating and building constantly, but we would hope that it would be done responsibly and with clear regard for community impact and environmental consequences. I respectfully ask why? I respectfully ask why this second unnecessary driveway be permitted when it adversely affects an entire neighborhood? Please approve our appeal. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Here, who's up next?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Finger. I live at 21 Fairview. I'll try to, oh, is that better? I did write to you. Thanks for reading what I wrote, so I won't repeat myself and I'll be very brief here. When our house was permitted sometime in the seventies, I've owned it since 1997, it was not even permitted to have one driveway unto itself. We share a driveway with our neighbors at 35. And the reason that we were not permitted to have a driveway on our own was that too many trees would have to be removed to accommodate the driveway. And so now I find that there's going to be a permit for somebody to have a second driveway and a number of trees are going to be permitted. So I feel that the standards have changed and not for the better. We're stewards of our environment. We're stewards of our community. And please approve the appeal. And I will say one more thing. There's a weight limit sign at the bottom of Sausalito Street that says 3,000 pounds. Are we sure that the equipment that's going to be taken back and forth won't weigh more than that? And I echo the feelings of a lot of people. I don't know that the road is going to accommodate everything that is expected of it at this point. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Town Council. Thank you for manifesting democracy through these proceedings this evening. My name is Tucker Hyatt. I live at 47 Alta Way, 100 paces from the town, from what the town may call a paper road, a mere right-of-way. But what for the neighborhood, what the neighborhood often calls Alta Woods, as you've seen here and as you've seen in various photos. At nine o'clock this morning, I walked through Alta Woods. Even the pre-construction orange flags and story poles didn't diminish, didn't diminish its beauty. Please look at the photo I took last year before any construction, before any destruction. Why would we, the town of Corte Madera, turn this into a driveway? One household's second driveway, in fact. Does that family need a second driveway? I would argue that no family, no household on earth needs two driveways. This family's predecessors at 800 Corte Madera Avenue, five wealthy families for over 50 years, were quite happy with one driveway. They felt as fire-safe as any of us, and their slightly faster access to Highway 101 did not demand the ruin of Alta Woods. Did the planning commission make a mistake in approving a driveway through Alta Woods? Could that decision, decision have gone the other way? I attended and then re-watched that meeting. The decision was much less certain than the four-to-one summary now that now, now, now we hear. Importantly, the planning commission had no particular obligation to heed public opinion. The planning commission didn't know that more than 62 neighbors have signed a petition to save Alta Woods. Has anyone signed the petition to turn Alta Woods into a driveway? I'm almost there. I began my comment by thanking you for this democratic public hearing. Please follow through with that democratic idea by hearing us neighbors now. Please stop the construction of a second driveway for one family through public property. Please approve the appeal. Please save Alta Woods.
Okay, next. Thank you.
Is that all right? Am I coming through clearly? My name's Carson Miller. I'm the owner of 34 Alta Way, live there with my wife and soon with our first child.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We're going to be spending the rest of our lives in this neighborhood and we're committed to what it is and hopefully what it will be. I want to just bring up a couple of points regarding the variance and item number four. Within the variance findings, which says that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to public welfare or material injurious to other property. And I think that's a very difficult one to, to, to make a statement in the positive for. From the first side of things, I think that from a water management perspective, it's hard to say that there won't be any additional stormwater runoff from all of 5,000-plus square feet of impermeable driveway surface, regardless of how you manage it. I didn't see in the plans any large detention or anything along those lines. I believe it's just level spread or sending the water down the hill to the same neighbors. So I imagine that they will see some degree of impact from this project. Additionally, secondly, view sheds. I think that there's been a statement saying that this driveway is elevation-wise above the neighboring properties, but it's, it's not. It's actually directly level with the properties on the opposite side of the valley on Sausalito Street and the street above, which can very, very clearly see the retaining walls and the story poles. I believe that those findings, the finding about the lack of view shed has actually not been found. If there are any statement to the contrary, it's not accurate. And I have not really seen a sufficient statement regarding the stormwater management other than that it's going into a drain on the road and coming out on a pipe, of a pipe on the lower side. So that's my statement. Thank you very much for your time and yeah.
Thanks very much.
Good evening. My name is Sean Randolph. I live at 48 Alderway, right at the junction of Alta Way, Alta Terrace, and Sausalito Street. So we live right in the middle of all of this. And we look from our home up at the hill where 800 is, and we look into a beautiful forest, which was part of the appeal for why we bought our property 25 years ago. I don't want to repeat what other people have said and will say other than to make a couple of really short points. One is it hasn't been demonstrated at any level that there's a compelling necessity for this second driveway, either for family access or for fire. There's perfectly good access off Camino Alto, circular road there. So fire access really is not an issue. We were told as part of the record long ago that in fact, there was an alternative route if the property wanted another exit, but it was too expensive or more expensive for the owners to use that route than to use this one. So in, in all due respect, the owners of this property are fabulously, wealthily. It is not our community's concern if an alternative route is more expensive when this route actually involves a taking of public property for personal use. There is some suspicion in the neighborhood that one of the purposes of this very large driveway is to potentially in the future put additional homes up there. If the board were to consider, and we hope it will not approve the variance, if it were to do it, we would really want the owners to stipulate that they will not at any time in the future request a change in the zoning to allow additional homes on that property. And there should be a stipulation by the town council that it would not consider such a proposal. Secondly, CEQA, we disagree with the staff's conclusion. The CEQA does not apply. This is public land. It is natural land. Disruption to public forest. We think CEQA very much does apply. And lastly, where my property borders, Sausalito Street, it is the main egress and entrance for our whole entire neighborhood, down to 101, out of the town in terms of fires, circumstances. It is an unstable street. It is very narrow, and in the wintertime, when I drive there, there are rocks that fall into the road from the uphill side. The downhill side that slopes into a deep valley at points is very narrow. At one point, it is razor-thin and there is a concrete support that's been developed with white poles along it. So we are deeply concerned that 10 months of heavy construction projects, you've heard about all the heavy construction and other transport vehicles and dump trucks that are going to be going up and down there. We're deeply concerned that that will destabilize that road, which is our main access for the entire community in and out of the neighborhood. So we don't think this should go forward without a complete analysis of the stability and security of Sausalito Street. We think all the neighbors who live on Sausalito Street should have been notified of the project and not just the immediate neighbors to 800 Corte Madera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is David Zeph, and I thank you for your diligent work on this. I second what Mary Carr said about there being no necessity. I second what Mr. Harlock said about there being no basis for a variance and the other impacts that are detrimental. There is a fallacy here that the local residents will be able to use this route in case of fire. That came up as a save, saving grace point in front of the planning commission. There's no provision for that. They talk about now about putting the chain up again. We've never heard of whether they're going to keep the chain up or down. The chain has to be there. I never knew who tore out those blackberries on the paper road. I like to pick those blackberries. And the fact is, they, they didn't own that road and they don't have any duty to maintain it and they had no right to modify it, but they think they own it and they want you to give it to them. I think that the, if, we've lived there 32 years and the whole neighborhood uses that area to, to walk. And if it were public, private property, we would have an easement by prescription because we've all used it hostilely and, and openly. Yet because it's public land, we don't have an easement. And these owners are, who have no necessity, are asking you to give them our silven public property for their private use to modify it and use it as they wish. And there's no way you're going to modify, monitor the traffic that they put on it. And, and there's no way we can enforce it. Thank you very much.
Dear Mayor and Council.
If you can lower the microphone a little more.
Mayor and council members and staff, my name is Glenda Swanson, and I'm in support of the appeal. Perspective, we all have one. It varies according to our location and view. My property sits below and downslope from 800 Corte Madera Avenue on Sausalito Street, where there has been landslides. There is a tremendous amount of raw water flowing down the slope into our basement and land during the rainy season. Our hillside is unstable. Soil erosion and land's instability are already present. Heavy rains have resulted in serious runoff flooding those who live on the west side of Sausalito Street. Two massive trees have fallen on our properties due to the saturated soil. I'm going to quote from the RH Consultants Report that the owners of 800 Corte Madera ordered on page 363. "It should be understood that the slope failures, including landslides, debris flows, and erosion are an ongoing natural process with gradual wear and tear landscape. Residual soil and weather bedrock can be susceptible downside slope movement, even on apparently stable sites. Such inherent hillside slopes risk are generally more prevalent during periods of intense prolonged rainfall in Northern California and/or during earthquakes. Therefore, it must be accepted that the occasional unpredictable slope failure and deposits of residential soil and bedrock materials are susceptible risk and hazards of building upon or near the base of any hillside or any steep or slope area. By accepting this report, the client and the recipients acknowledge their understanding and acceptance of these risks and hazards and the terms and condition thereof." That's what they said. "So this is not a theoretical danger. It's acknowledged risk that we, the neighbors, do not want to accept that risk. I am deeply concerned that this construction project will destabilize a hill. The orientation of my home is to the back of the property, and the slide will destroy the living area outside and potentially inside my house. My neighbors on the side of the street have similar concerns with the water intrusion. While the neighbors in the surrounding areas have concerns about the impact of the construction on our fragile roads and heavy machinery displacing important vegetation and wildlife, we all share that concern as well. We hope that our elected officials of the town of Corte Madera will see the situation from all sides and represent all of us, not just the one requesting this extensive invasive driveway project. There must be a better solution. Just because you can do something does not mean you should."
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Thank you.
Oops. Good evening. I'm Paula Frankel, and I can't get the microphone to stand. I've lived on Chapman Drive in Corte Madera for 33 years. And I disagree with the caretaker of 800 Corte Madera Avenue. They are not good neighbors. They refused repeatedly to meet with us face-to-face, sent their lawyers and people that work for them to meet with us. There's, I agree with everything that's been said by my neighbors in opposition to this driveway. It's not necessary. Waves, a traffic app sends cars down Chapman and Alta Way when 101 North is backed up during rush hour. And this construction in addition of a second driveway, I can't imagine the traffic mess that's going to occur when those Sausalito and Alta Way and this new driveway, when the cars get together. It's going to be a nightmare for all the neighborhood. I don't understand how you can agree to give 3,300 square feet of public land to a wealthy family for an unnecessary driveway. They have three roads for their exits. And I don't know why they were trapped in there a week. We had trees down on our party, property during a storm. The fire department came in two hours and removed the trees. I, I really hope that you will not approve this driveway. Thank you.
There's a familiar face.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Matthew Hartzell. I am a resident of Larkspur, but I consider Corte Madera as much my community as Larkspur. I urge you to accept the appeal and reject the project. You've already received my five-page letter, so I'm going to not repeat points from that and, and make some new points based on what I've heard tonight. First of all, I want to point out that the applicant representative's presentation contained a glaring error. On one of the maps, it said the paper street is not public right-of-way. That is not true. I don't know if that was a typo or intentional, but the paper street is belonging to the public right-of-way. And I really want to dwell on the point that the part of this public right-of-way would be given to the private use of the residents. So right now, nobody is allowed to drive their car on the paper street. But resident, the resident of 800 would be able to drive their car on this paper street if the project goes forward. Would other people be able to drive their cars on the paper street? How can you let just one resident drive on the paper street, which belongs to the public, and not let others? I don't want any cars driving on the paper street. Also, why is there no mention of easements or compensation to the town in, anywhere in the 480-page staff report related to the giving of this use for private driving on this paper street to this resident? Also, for the entire year long of the project, the construction road, the spoils site, the dump truck loading, all of that is taking place on the public's land. Where is the public's compensation? I don't see it. And finally, in the spirit of compromise, I do want to point out that you have an excellent policy in your general plan, PSH 2.2, encourage hillside residents to learn the trails and footpaths in their neighborhoods for use as alternative escape routes. 800 already has three emergency egress routes on Chapman Avenue, Corte Madera Avenue, and Camino Alto. There is also the Bob Madog Trail just down the slope from their property, which connects to Underhill Road in Mill Valley. It would be an excellent alternative emergency egress point for pedestrians on foot, according to your general plan. So I encourage the applicant to build a trail to the Bob from their property to the Bob Madog Trail for emergency egress. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Good evening. My name is Marion Cohen, and I live at 3 Alta Terrace, which is directly adjacent to this proposed project. I have been present at every meeting and tonight I respond. I respectfully stand here and ask you, our elected town officials, to please evaluate the facts that we have carefully laid before you, and please approve this appeal. Let's be clear about one thing. This project is shrouded under the false cover of fire safety to simply acquiesce to the desires of one very mysterious and wealthy family, so they can more conveniently come and go from another direction when a perfectly good exit route and routes already exist. If this family is indeed so pyrophobic, they have the means and the space to build themselves a fire bunker for their personal use in case of emergency without taking public land, without disrupting precious vegetation and wildlife habitats, without causing drainage issues, and in addition, exposing the neighbors in the neighborhood to hundreds of dump truck loads and heavy equipment that would destroy our streets and add to traffic and cause needless wear and tear on all of us just for their benefit. In a democracy, which is, which as a nation, we are struggling to protect, public opinion matters. The right to public land use by the majority of the public matters. The environment matters. And our government and elected officials are supposed to protect what matters to the majority of the voting public. Tonight, I think you realize this project matters to us. So, please do the right thing, approve this appeal, and disallow this unnecessary project, this driveway that they don't need. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Good evening, Mayor Ravazio and members of the Cordermadera Town Council. I'm Judy Creasy. I live at 400 Sausalito Street, directly across from the proposed 800 Cordermadera Avenue project. I trust you, our elected council members, have studied our denial statement and homeowner letters. Thank each of you for visiting with us the Alta Woods Trail. I have the ability to read construction plans and am able to envision the proposed project in completion. This is not just a driveway. It is a road comprised of massive concrete walls and roadbed. It will stand out as an illuminated monolith facing our Hidden Valley neighborhood once the hillside is denuded due to the extraordinary number of trees removed. The excavation and leveling of the entry roadbed, the building of the third retaining wall facing Sausalito Street, and the looming proposed, in its entirety, 20-foot gate set the scene of the destruction of Alta Woods. A huge concern by my accountability is the proposed construction road, an extension of the town property trail above the homes on Sausalito Street. This has been minimally addressed. There is an altitude of just winging it as to how the trail will be stabilized for turnaround use by the heavy dump trucks and other construction equipment. The present wooded trail, beginning to its end, would be commandeered, ripped up, graded, and will have lost, and we will have lost forever its shaded and peaceful beauty. The LLC above has no concern for their adopted community. They began this project as a convenient way, as a convenient way to town, and subsequently played the fire card. We trust you, our Cordermadera Town Council, to stand for the town codes and town general plan that the proposed road will violate. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Mayor Ravazio, council members and town staff, excuse me. My name is Jan Berto, and my wife and I, Karen, spoke earlier, live at 405, oh, excuse me, 405 Sausalito Street, directly below the proposed driveway of 800 Cordermadera Avenue. In fact, we can see the story poles for the driveway retaining walls and the trees marked for removal from our kitchen door that goes out to our backyard. I urge you to uphold the appeal and deny both the variance for the retaining walls and driveway structure and license to use a 3,300 square feet of right-of-way for a private secondary driveway for 800 Cordermadera Avenue. The project is out of step with the town's mission. Where we work to improve, I'm sorry, where I quote, "where we work to improve the beauty, infrastructure, and character of our town," end quote. Maybe, sorry, the project is a threat to a treasured public resource, Alta Woods, a path used for decades by local residents for peaceful walks, nature enjoyment, quiet connection, not to mention the deer and their fawns that we regularly see up there. Contrast this with what will then be a gravelled-over road driven on multiple times a day by the owners of 800 Cordermadera to shave a minute off a travel time that takes about three and a half minutes from their primary gate down to town center. Yes, the driveway is supposedly for fire safety, but who are we kidding? It will be used 100% of the time by the owners. On page 306 of the 6A staff report PDF, Mr. Rifkin in his email to town council attempts to minimize the scope of this project by saying, "The project is not a major development. It is just a driveway." I would beg to differ on that assertion. It is a 450-foot driveway or 1 1/2-foot ball fields that will take close to a year to build. It will require the removal of 47 trees, over 100 dump truck runs up and down Sausalito Street, paving over Alta Woods with gravel, and putting up 175-foot retaining wall on the northeast side of Alta Way, opposite of the proposed driveway. I will, since I'm out of time, I will leave it at that, and I will just add one last thing. Sorry. The, as has been said by others tonight, the biggest appeal of this neighborhood is that we are surrounded by nature, and we would like to keep that nature as is. Mayor Ravazio, council members and staff, please stand with your 100-plus constituent households and approve our appeal to deny this supposed just a driveway project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, I see better without these. Good evening, Mayor Ravazio, town council members and staff. My name is Darlene Hyatt. I'm a longtime resident of 47 Alta Way, and that's about 100 yards from what the community knows as Alta Woods, the town's right-of-way in question. The scope and scale of this project took many of us by surprise. What started off as a simple driveway grew and grew in its eventual takeover of Alta Woods. Until this project actually happens, no one can really envision what the outcome will be until it's too late. This is a case of an applicant wanting a second driveway that has more far-reaching negative impacts on our neighborhood and community. This want by the applicants would bring on a subsequent domino effect that spills onto our town-owned land. And we've covered a lot of what would be impacted, but again, I want to highlight the, the wildlife habitats and the loss of the canopies and the shade of the 80-foot tall trees, mature trees, that will be removed and not necessarily be replaced. This is not just a driveway. That was initially touted, it was, pardon, it was initially touted to be for emergency fire access only. That, to me, conjured up, well, then it's minimal use. It won't be used very much if it's just for fire or emergency, if any. If this project goes through, this driveway will turn into a thoroughfare, not just for the owner's multiple trips on a daily basis, but for the owner's staff and workers responsible for maintaining and repairing the driveway. Is this what tranquil, undisturbed Alta Woods would become? This proposed second driveway is a preference. It's optional. It is not a requirement by the Cordermadera Fire Department. Like those owners before them, the current owners are able to enjoy their property as intended. They have an existing functional driveway that Chief Martin said the fire department can readily access to reach their property. I asked the town council for due diligence to determine whether this project's desired review, their general plan, and the variance thoroughly meet the proper requirements. All we're asking for is what is fair and what is right. Please deny the approval by the Planning Commission, and don't allow Alta Woods to become a private second driveway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Ravazio and council members, my name is Anne Bosch Randolph. I also live at 48 Alta Way, which is a thoroughfare for the new Cordermadera project. I am asking the town council to reject the variance and permit requested to build a second driveway, really a roadway, a 16-foot roadway that goes into the narrows of Alta Terrace and Alta Way. I, on the top of my hill from 48 Alta Way, both Alta Terrace and Alta Way funnel through, and trucks turn around in my driveway. My driveway has paint on it, asphalt on it, gravel on it. I have cars that have lost their brakes and tried to get into my driveway and gone through my retaining walls. I cannot, I cannot understand how the council can approve a driveway of 16 feet going into the narrows of Alta Terrace by also taking away land from our very quiet neighborhood. I second all my, all the people in my neighborhood who, and, and ask you to reject the whole project so that 17 different types of trucks don't go by our house, and so that Alta Terrace does not fail as a thoroughfare going that way. With the increased ways that we've talked about through the other neighbors, I just can't fathom living through that kind of construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here once again to espouse how I feel and how my neighbors have expressed. They're disquiet with this whole project. The facts really are that are before you, we, we feel will provide you with ample reasons to reverse the commission's decision to approve the project. Our appeal was very hard to come up with and work on, and the folks that worked on it deserve lots of kudos. The conversion of public open space, the road, private, the right-of-way, for the private use of one family to the exclusion of the public's benefit is simply wrong. As you can see by the many letters and comments expressing opposition, the secondary driveway is not necessary. It, it does not increase the fire protection for us. It's simply a matter of convenience. While Chief Martin supports the driveway, he said it wasn't necessary to reach the property. In fact, he said a fire would be fought from the existing driveway up on top with water flowing down, as opposed to trying to fight going up from Alta Woods. Water does, I don't know, travel upwards very well. The retaining walls of 12 feet exceed the town's height regulations of 3 feet. To allow a variance of this magnitude is deplorable and constitutes grounds for denial of the project in and of itself. The design of the secondary driveway is not in any way consistent with the environment of Alta Woods. If these folks that live at 800 are so afraid of fire, fearful, they should cut down or dramatically thin out the multiple eucalyptus trees that are on the property, both from the entrance of the residence road and also the staff road. And they've said it's too expensive to improve the staff road to make it a little bit more friendly for the fire department. I, I suggest that they look at other alternatives. Stay on their own property. Do the best they can to monitor and, and maintain the habitat. And please approve the appeal.
Thank you.
I am a longtime resident. Just one more.
Okay, we're, we're a minute over now. You've gone longer than anybody.
That's, that's me. As a longtime resident, something like 54 years, in the neighborhood, I implore you to use your civic power to save Alta Woods, the open space for continued enjoyment and peace and safety of us neighbors. And Cordermaderans, allowing the proposed secondary driveway will deprive future neighbors of the natural habitat, wildlife, and serenity of, of the area. It is up to you, and it is your responsibility as elected members to preserve this open space, which so many of us have given you reasons to do so. Please save Alta Woods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is this the last comment in the room? If anybody else wants to make a comment, please get in line.
Couple more behind me.
Okay, thank you.
Hi there, everybody. Barry Cohen here, 3 Alta Terrace, adjacent neighbor. If there's, first of all, it was brought to my attention that on one of the documents that was passed around, that I had agreed with this in the very first meeting with Joe Hill. That is not correct. I did not. I just want to be clear. That is an incorrect statement. If there's anything that's come out of this that's very positive, it's this feeling of community. Because this band, this group of people, 62 of which have spoken up, and I'm sure there's more, I didn't know a lot of these people. I've come to know them, lovely folks. We all have a similar goal. We just don't think it's necessary. You know, people have harped on the fact that these are wealthy people, so they want to do the, I don't care if they're wealthy, but they just don't deserve any more privilege than the rest of us. We're all the same. It is that democracy that my wife spoke of. But my bigger concern is, and, and maybe I'm a little off in, in wondering about this, but this began, as has been stated, to be a driveway that would be used only in the case of emergency. And that was kind of palatable, even with all the disruption. But it morphed, and it morphed into the primary driveway, and that means regular use all the time. My fear is delivery trucks and a number of other vehicles being used. But the greater concern, and I'm wondering about, it's kind of like something's rotten in Denmark here, possibly. I'm wondering about a little subterfuge, that there's a desire to put in this driveway so that a lot split can be created for building additional homes and ADUs, all of which would end up using that side of the property as the exit and entry. This could be up to 16 more cars as I started thinking about it. I've got a concern for that. I wonder if the owners would agree to never doing a lot split. And I wonder if that would change their whole opinion, and maybe they wouldn't want this driveway. I don't know. But I do think it's a driveway of convenience. But I do think it's a driveway of convenience, and we are against it.
And we're out of time.
Thank you very much.
If you have to wrap up, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, staff, and council. My name is Ted Jacobs. I was a property owner here in Larkspur, or Corder Madera, excuse me, for six years. I live in Lucas Valley. I'm the former owner of Tree Masters. I'm not paid to be here. I'm just giving my opinion for the trees. One of my clients called with a question and shared the story with me and asked me to take a look and give my thoughts. So I looked at the report. It's a good report, and it's an accurate report. But Arborist Reports can be somewhat subjective. I started the company in 1987, and that area pretty much looks the same as it did 37 years ago when I started my company. And what I really see is a healthy forest of good and fair and poor trees, not necessarily 22 poor, 20 fair, or whatever the number was. And health or condition and risk are all three very different things with trees. But if you just go with risk of the trees, the risk factor would most likely come up low or moderate. And I am a qualified tree risk assessor, and that's a two-day course with one day of testing that you go through. But if we were to just remove all the poor or fair trees in open space with the numbers that are provided in that report, which are somewhat accurate, you'd be removing 92% of the open space trees using that formula. Even if you found other areas that were maybe three times healthier, you'd still be removing 75% of the trees. So I don't know if that's a real good formula. I just wanted to bring that to the attention. As far as root loss and soil holding together, when you are removing trees and not disturbing the soil, the roots do hold the soil, but with all the construction, that would all be lost. I did notice also some discrepancies in replanting. Staff was reporting a lot of five-gallon and 15-gallon trees, whereas the owner's rep was showing all 24-inch box trees. So I think that you all should get some clarification on what's going to be there. So I am not either for or against. I just wanted to share my thoughts about the trees with you. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your contribution.
My name is Dr. Bob Creasy. I live at 400 Sausalito Street. First of all, I wish to thank Mr. Rifkin for injecting what I consider some questionable humor into our serious thought, and our discussions are serious, I think you all would agree. I do have some questions for Corder Madera in particular, and certainly our elected On July 30th, about five or six days ago, the following was written by Mr. Rifkin to the town council. It is just a driveway. Think about that. How many of you would consider this statement to be true? If a driveway needed over 100 large trucks to deliver or take away material? Or if a driveway needed to have some town land on a permanent basis? Or if a driveway needed to borrow some land for perhaps a year or more? Just taking away the nature walks that all of our children and adults have used for Or is it needed to build a wall 12 feet high? A simple driveway? Oh, yes, one other thing. Most driveways aren't 400 feet or more long. How many variances do you really need for something like that? I wish to thank Mr. Rifkin for what my best-baited termed humor. Such comment actually helps for us to all to understand what the LLC is proposing and how it thinks, and where it resides when thinking about the local town and residents of Corder Madera.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we have a rule for our council that if our meetings are going to go beyond 9:30, we take a vote to make sure that everybody is willing to keep going. So do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion instead, I mean, another half hour.
Is there a second?
Second. Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, how many more still need to speak? Just one more? Okay.
I think so.
Oh, if you'd like to speak, please go up to the microphone.
I was just bringing clarity to the last speaker about trees.
Oh, I think everybody's welcome to speak. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, once. Okay, yeah, my name's Doug Wildman with Bartlett Consulting. I did prepare the report, and I just wanted to respond to, the report has nothing in it about risk, right? It's about tree health and its ability, trees' ability to withstand construction impact. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, and that if one looks at the last, the appendix, it has a few attributes of trees, so a few more information, bits of information than the first disposition table. So that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to go into what is a kind of the final round, a five-minute rebuttal period for each.
Mayor Ravazio.
Oh, sorry?
We do have a hand raise.
Online, I forgot. We have to listen to the Zoom people. Okay, tell them that they're only going to get two minutes, and they will be cut off at two minutes.
Yes, we have one hand raised from Ava. And every public comment that was received via email was made available on the website and responded to. So I just wanted to make that note. Ava, you should be able to speak whenever you're ready. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it very brief. It was paradoxical and somewhat sad to hear so many implications of this democratic process when you see a bunch of residents going up against an anonymous LLC. And that should tell you a little bit about the state of democracy. I would also point out that we've never really favored democracy in the U.S. It's why we have a representative democracy, which is really only the illusion of a democracy. But I would also just very briefly and very respectfully, and as briefly as possible, just ask you to hold another idea in your mind as everyone comes forward and argues for the trees and the environment and the sanctity of their homes and the risk of fire. Please know that our country is dropping fire and incendiary devices, bombs. Through Israel onto Gaza, we're using F-16s, F-35s, F-15s, all made in the U.S. Almost all of the bombs that are being dropped there are made here in the United States. You value your homes, your families, your lives, your security. Think of what has been going on for 22 months. I beg you to, that sense of care that you have and love that you have for your neighbors, please extend it to others. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Is there anybody else? Okay, just one, I guess I scared them all away, huh? Okay, so we get five minutes for each party to give their rebuttal, and I think we start with the applicant, is that correct? And let's say rebuttal slash compromise, if you have some things you can do to make this work, we're all ears.
Sure. Mayor Ravazio, Len Rifkin for the applicant. I respectfully request, actually, if you could give me 10 minutes. We've listened to an hour and a half of public comment, and there is many things that were raised, and it is impossible for me to rebut or respond to all of the comments within five minutes. Even the appellant had, the spouse spoke, and he was a co-appellant, and he spoke for three minutes along with the thing. I mean, it would be only fair to give us more time.
So if I could ask the appellant, would you also, would you agree with this if you also had a 10-minute wrap-up? Sorry, but I'd have to do it equally for both sides if we want to extend it. Who's in charge?
You're in charge.
Okay. It's late. It's late. Let's go for eight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your courtesy. So the first thing that I want to start with is, there's a whole bunch of discussion about what is this land? We're hearing about Alta Woods and public land and all of that. The legal facts are that this is a paper street that was designated on a 1906 map, and I want to have the subdivision map made part of the public record here, so it's included from 1906. I'll bring it over to Madam Clerk when I have an opportunity. And so what does that mean? At some point in time, not on the subdivision map, normally there's an offer of dedication, and the town accepts or rejects the street. There was none of that, but I accept the town's representation that it says it has a right-of-way. That's a right to use the land, but the land is actually owned by the adjoining lots under Civil Code, Section 831. That's the presumption that you owned to the middle of the street. So there is no public lands. Now, this Alta Woods we're talking about, that's private property. That's 800 Corder Madera Avenue. It's private land. The majority of this driveway, as you saw on the slides, the vast majority of it is on private land. And the alternative design has been moved up so that far even less in order, and that alternative design was made in response to council inquiries over the last couple of weeks. Every effort has been made. The end result will be that the public will still have the same access they have today after the project is done. There is nothing preventing the public from walking on this paper street. They can still do it before. There's going to be some interruption during construction. It's true of any construction. I don't care what you're building. That always interrupts access during the construction period. And so I hope that clarifies that, and I want to answer any questions that council members have about this, technicalities of this. I want to now emphasize that staff and two separate staff reports before the planning commission on April 8th and May 27th supported the project. The planning commission on a 4-1 vote supported the project. The fire department through the chief supports the project. The project is building of a driveway. People are making light of the word. They said I used the word driveway. Well, in fact, that's what it is. Yes, it's a larger driveway, and the reason why it's as big and wide as it is is because it has to meet current fire code, 16 to 20 feet, so that a fire truck can literally get up it. So that's what directs the size of it. Now, let's talk about the design of this driveway. I want to make an analogy to the Goldilocks story. You remember where Goldilocks comes in, and the porridge is either too cold or too hot, but there was one set of porridge that was just right? Well, that's the same of this design, members of the council. There's one option, you could go straight up the hill, and you'd have gigantic retaining walls. Another option would be you could have switchbacks back and forth, and it would be way more grading and way more trees. Or you could do it just right and have one switchback, which we have, in which it minimizes the number of trees being removed, and it minimizes the amount of grading. We've had a whole bunch of discussion about trees. There are 1,200 trees on this property that are six inches or greater. The net loss of trees, the 47 trees out of the 72 in the project area represent approximately 4%. 3% of the trees are being put back at 32. It's a net loss of 1% of trees out of 1,200 in order to add this driveway. It's not a significant loss. In addition, the Arborist Report says that in fact, of the 47 trees, 43 of them are either in poor or fair condition. That's the Arborist opinion. One is dead. The other three, two of the other three are bay trees that are paraffitic and undesirable. I don't think there's an issue about trees. This project is completely overwhelmed with engineers. We have civil engineer, structural engineer, geotechnical engineer. These people are going to put their stamps on these plans. So I don't see any technical response from the appellant, from licensed professionals saying this isn't working. Let's put up Slide 27 if we could. Could we stop the clock while we put up Slide 27, please? Thank you. It's not stopping. Thank you. I'm just, all right, well, I'll start talking about Slide 27 while we're looking for it. And this is Slide 27 from our report, from our, not, not, not. When they're getting it up, I'll just keep going, and hopefully we'll be able to get Slide 27 up. So what I want to talk about is, what is your job tonight? Your job tonight is you have, it's a very narrow, limited scope. The appeal is about design review approval and variance approval. That's what the planning commission did. Planning commission made findings. The staff report amply illustrates in the draft resolution the findings that you can make. These are the design review findings that you can make that supports the design review approval. And what's, I think, the most key about this is, as you go through, I'm sure you read the staff report very closely, and I think Martha did a marvelous job drafting it. She's a stellar staff person. Make sure you keep her. And so, under, this project complies or conforms with the general plan, and one of the things is, it doesn't necessarily remove trees, as I talked about. It doesn't significantly or adversely affect views. We've talked about that. The views are of private property. When this is done, every effort has been made to mitigate the impact of this. 24-inch box trees, no, not every single tree that is being replaced is 24-inch box, but the landscape plan makes clear which ones were in the planning commission, required more 24-inch box in areas, and that's what they required. And so ultimately, with the mitigations that the planning commission required, and eventually within a few years, and the vines growing on the earth-toned concrete, this thing is going to meld into the environment, and people will continue walking on the paper street. So in sum, you can make findings for design review. Can we put up, Martha, Slide 28? Slide 28, please. There you go. Anyway, as we're waiting for Slide 28, these are the findings about variance. People have made a big deal about the variance. Yes, you absolutely need to make the variance findings. These are the findings that suggest you can make that. And again, the staff report is marvelously written that suggests the findings in the draft resolution says that you can. And here's what I want to emphasize. Do special circumstances apply to this property? That's finding number one. Absolutely. It's the largest property of its kind in Sausalito, Sausalito, excuse me, Corder Madera. And it's steep, 52%. Where they selected to put the driveway is actually below the 52%. It's why the engineers picked there. It's like 45% there. It's the only place that they could locate in the least steep place that would work. And so that makes it a special circumstance. Because of these special circumstances, strict application of the three-foot height, you couldn't build this driveway with three feet. Remember the Goldilocks? It has to be just right. Well, it's not straight up. It's not back and forth. It's one sweeping curve. That's why, and so if you limited it three feet, the driveway couldn't be built. Wouldn't happen. And if you think about it, we have a property of 500,000 square feet approximately versus the average-sized house lot is 5,000 to 7,000 square feet. This property is 100 times bigger than the average lot size in Corder Madera. So we've heard a lot about, is this driveway necessary or not? Well, I would suggest when you have a 500,000-square-foot lot, you might need another egress and ingress place, particularly for fire safety from that portion of the property. That's why. And then I've heard comments tonight, oh, they can live in a firebox, you know, if they're so concerned about fire. With due respect, that's an outrageous comment. Of course, people Of course, people want to get out if there's a fire. No one wants to stay in a box. And this driveway, this driveway, let's, let's, because I realize I'm, I'm out of time and you're being so polite, but I'm suggesting you absolutely can make the findings of the variance. I would just like to go to the very last slides, which is, the next one's 2934, and I'm just going to flip through them within five seconds of each, Martha.
Yeah, real quick, Len, it's getting late. Thank you. What's that?
Yeah, I, I have, I have 30 more seconds, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead. We want to, we want to hear you out.
Okay. Thank you. So if we could put up, if we could put up the last slides, please. And by the way, a lot of the time was lost in putting the slides up, so we, we get some of that. All right. So I want to last say, if you go, in 2021, the town created a climate adaption, a climate adaptation plan. This driveway is the poster child for that plan. Next slide, please. It talks about hillsides and this adaptation plan calls for additional emergency evacuation routes from the Chapman Hills. That's exactly what this is. Next slide. And it calls for evacuation and require, and there's unique challenges. This driveway creates an opportunity for evacuation, not only for the family, but for the neighborhood. Last slide, please, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll finish up. Next slide, please. In the end, we just experienced a horrific firestorm in LA. It's not a matter of if, but when we're going to have that fire in this county. And at that time, the fire professionals are not going to be saving buildings. They're going to be trying to save lives. That's the most important thing. This driveway will save lives, not only the family, but lives of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Okay, now we will hear from the appellant with a five-minute rebuttal, and then we will come back to the council for deliberation. And a note, we do have to take another vote at 10 o'clock to continue, and that has to be unanimous, so.
A little bit you want to give back.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, not five minutes. You get eight or whatever you need, not eight or nine, under, under nine. Let's do that.
So Brenda and I are actually sharing this. Brenda Brown.
Okay, make sure you really speak into the microphone, okay, so we can hear you.
So again, Karen Lawrenson and Brenda Brown. We, we both live on Sausalito Street. Before starting, I just wanted to clarify one thing, or maybe correct one thing that the applicant said in their presentation, which when they were talking about the end of the right-of-way, and that it was fenced off because, and we wanted it fenced off, that may have been a misunderstanding. I, I think I could speak for everyone in this room, that it would be lovely to have that area opened up for us and used as open space. So I just want to quickly talk about variance, everyone's favorite topic tonight. Len is actually right. I think this does have special circumstances, but you guys may have noticed that that's the only thing he highlighted, because there are four different criteria that are required to meet a variance. One is special circumstances, but you also have to show practical difficulty. And there is no reason or necessary reason for this variance in our minds. That difficulty can also, it can't be tied to money. It can't be tied to this thing costs too much, so we're going to do some other kind of variance. It can't, there's no, it can have no special privilege, and we think this does, because there is no other driveway like this. It's exceptionally steep. And it may have 12 to 13-foot retaining walls. I mean, there's nothing like this around. And so again, that's special treatment, requires licensing of public land, special treatment. And, and then the third one is detrimental to public welfare. And I think you heard from about 30 people tonight how detrimental we all believe this is going to be to our community. So I, I beg you to please look into the variance law. One more, one more thing. There is something called the Arrendas Association versus the Board of Supervisors, and I'm not a lawyer, but that may be one place you want to look.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, it's called the Arrendas Association versus the Board of Supervisors. And it says you can't look at one part of a project, you have to look at the whole thing when considering a variance.
Thank you.
Brenda Brown, 410 Sausalito. I'm going to speak to the point of fire safety. And we've heard a lot about how this property will be helpful, and I understand that it will help the owners evacuate safely. And I've heard a lot about the emphasis on this particular property and the need to protect the owners. But my request is that of all of our neighbors. We are many, and we are subject to fire danger as well. And as Karen said in her opening statement, we have done everything we could to protect our neighborhood from fire, including increasing defensible space. But the point I want to make is, nothing has been said, and I'd love Ruben Martin to speak to the comments that we've attributed to him, that this driveway is not necessary to protect that home. And also, I, I've been reading a lot about how there is new technology to protect our neighborhoods, including partnerships with different other entities, whether they be other fire departments or aircraft providers of helicopters with tanks, and even drones that fire officials have been studying with, with great interest to see if they could protect us. Us, meaning not only 800, but also all of the neighbors. And, and we form about 120 neighbors, or, excuse me, 120 homes, 85 in Hidden Valley. Another thing, these are just errors that I picked up. There are, let me back up. This is not just a driveway. This is a massive construction project, and it extends 445 feet, this driveway does, with the construction road of almost 600 feet. So we're talking massive project. There is a third retaining wall that we really haven't talked about, and I think the applicants have said it is 145 feet in length. It's actually 175 feet in length. So we can quibble over a few feet, but they may make a difference, particularly when we're devoting 3,300 square feet of public right-of-way to this project to support the driveway. So, and even with the gate moved up onto private property, we're talking the remaining area of, of square feet of public right-of-way is reduced to about 2,600 out of 3,300. So I'm talking approximate stuff here, but I think my figures are, are pretty accurate. So I join my neighbors and Karen, all of us, in saying, please consider our appeal and please regard your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now actually, we're going to entertain final questions from the council. And the council at this time will start with any questions that you have, final questions of the appellant or the applicant, and/or the applicant. Let's start down here with Jim this time.
You did last time, too. Anyway, yeah, I'm looking at.
If you're not ready, I can ask somebody else to start.
Yeah.
You want me to ask, who else? Who's ready?
Okay.
All right, Eli's ready. Eli's always ready. Let's go. Go ahead, Eli.
Can we bring Slide 28 back up, please, which was the variance findings? Martha's presentation, I believe. Was it? Okay. Whichever one, Slide 28 was the variance findings. And I guess, thanks, and I can start my question in the meantime. So there's, there's no worries. There's two findings that I have questions about. The second finding, here we go, thank you. The second finding, because of these special circumstances, the strict application of the town zoning ordinance will result in practical difficulty and unnecessary physical hardship and will deprive the property of the privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under the same zoning classification. I believe this is the only property of its zoning classification, certainly in the vicinity, possibly in town. Is, is that correct? And if so, how is?
There are probably about 10 properties zoned R1C. In the vicinity of this project, the majority of properties are zoned R1A. And the setbacks differ between those two designations. An R1C has a 100-foot rear yard setback, and an R1A has a 35-foot rear yard setback.
Okay, I think I, I saw a parcel map somewhere in, in one of these packets, and it looked, it looked like the, it looked like 800 Corder Madera may have been at least the only one in the immediate vicinity, but maybe I'm mistaken there. And then second, second question, variance finding three constitute, you know, the variance or adjustment will not constitute a grant of special privileges. What is the definition of a grant of special privileges?
Rebecca, there really isn't one. It's for the, the town council to decide whether or not having a driveway is somehow relevant to a privilege that is generally enjoyed by the neighbors here. If the council finds, for example, that the driveway is necessary to provide them with an equivalent level of fire safety and evacuation options, then that might be considered, excuse me, then it would not be a special privilege to have a second driveway. However, if it would not bring them equal, then perhaps a second driveway might be a special privilege. It's really within the discretion of the town council.
Okay, thank you. And then one more, one more question of staff. If one of the properties immediately downhill of the paper road, let's say, I'm just going to pick one, for example, say 405 Sausalito, if they decided that they wanted to build like a rear driveway, do a switchback up the hill to reach the paper road, how would that proposal be received by planning?
It would have to be evaluated. That's a hard question to ask without giving it some, some thought. But whenever we're evaluating applications, we look at findings, design review findings and variance findings. And we, you know, discuss projects amongst the planning team and with our town attorneys as we're evaluating, you know, these kind of questions that come in. Because we do field a lot of questions from people with, you know, proposals, and we talk about it internally as part of our process.
Thank you.
Who's next? Brett?
I have a couple. I'm back to Chief Martin. Is this project, in your point of view, deemed a necessity? And can you still get fire trucks up there? And I'll throw not just fire trucks, also medic 14, from a paramedic standpoint. So the, the key thing, is it a necessity?
The second driveway? So let's back up a little bit. It's, we'll unwind that. So this building was built in 2002. A lot has changed in the last 23 years, both with fire department access requirements and/or fire, relatively wildfires within the state of California. We've seen with climate change, the increase of fire intensity throughout the state. As one, I think Mr. Rivkin stated, it's just a matter of time of when, as opposed to of if it will. So let's say if this building was being built today on an 11-acre parcel, we as the fire department would require 16-foot driveways through a primary entrance and would require a secondary access to this just based on the size of the property, giving the property owners access and ingress and egress to the site. So that's if it's being built today. Now, there is nothing in the codes that are written within our municipal code or within the state law that allows me or requires me to demand a property owner to install a secondary driveway. So that's where we're looking at is legacy construction versus what we would require today. So what we're trying to do is accommodate an applicant who's coming to try to improve fire safety, not only for themselves, but with removal of some of this fuel and prove fire safety within the community by installing a secondary driveway voluntarily. So instead of us requiring it, because there is no law that would require it, that it's now allowing them to do it voluntarily. And I hope that answers your question.
Okay. And then it may be more for Chris on this one. I didn't realize this, because somebody brought this up. Is there a restriction on the, the weight of trucks going up Sausalito? Somebody brought up, it was like 3,000 pounds. I didn't even realize we had anything like that in town.
Yeah, there's currently a sign on the bottom of Sausalito that says, limit three tons. So it's actually 6,000 pounds, but the limit is six, sorry, three tons for going up Sausalito and up Chapman Park. And we have weight restrictions on Christmas Street Hill and Chapman Park.
So does that, would that affect the types of construction trucks that would be involved with this project?
Potentially, yeah. We'd have to evaluate what type of equipment they're planning to use, but that's the general guideline for that area.
All right, thanks. That's all happening now.
Okay, Jim or Rosa?
I'm sorry, Pat, before we do that, I think we're at 10.
Oh, okay.
And I feel like I'm making a push and extend the meeting half an hour, or another 30 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Pacisus. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm watching carries.
Okay, go right ahead.
Me? Rosa?
Either.
You want me to go?
Yeah, you can go.
Okay, all right. So turn this on. My question is for you, Ms. Danforth. When we make the findings, what is the, is there, you know, you can make two, but you can't make three, or, you know, you can't make them all, but what's, what do we have to?
You have to make them all.
You have to make them all.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Good, that's good to know. And I, my other question was about fire safety. So altogether, I'm kind of focused on that expand, the widening down at the bottom of Alta Terrace, and then in combination with all the other, I, I'm just, I just want to get an idea of how valuable is that? And what, and, and I think that's a weird, you know, way to put it, but just what do you think the value of that to you would be?
It's one of those of trying to quantify the negative, so to speak. It's if we widen the roadway will improve safety in the area by providing access for the fire department when we're called? Yes, it's extremely valuable. However, you know, if you don't widen it, we're still going to get there, it's just going to be much more challenging. And so widening the base and improving that turn in any way we possibly can, in every way we possibly can, improves the access to the entire community.
Okay. And then the approach, like where you, the way you get to their, to 800's driveway now is like a drop-off on one side and all this vegetation and exposed roots on the other side, and it's quite narrow. And you couldn't do two cars, you know, one going any each way. So is that the way you would get to the property if there was no other way to get to it now? Or is there's no other way to get to the property?
Our only access is through the Corder Madera Gate, off of Corder Madera Avenue, which is just past Chapman Avenue. So that's our access point now. And then working with the applicant, as you can tell, on the first portion of the lower part of the new driveway, you'll see a section that's 24 feet wide, and that was intended to allow for vehicles to pass.
Right. And they, and that is going to be?
That's part of the design, yes.
Part of the design as well. Okay, I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still focused on, if you, you look at chart, see one dot 1A, you know, basically the raft area.
It's the one showing the new drainage area at the very bottom of the right-of-way.
Yeah. Okay. And then I go and look at the.
Part of the applicant's presentation.
Soil's study. Has anybody studied? Soils study. Has anybody studied the soils from the bottom of the proposed driveway? The whole route of this construction area, this construction road? Because when I look at page four of the RGH consultants, looks like they're only studying the proposed area of the driveway.
From understanding the question.
Drew, do you? I want, I'd like to remind everybody here that the plans that have been submitted so far are preliminary drawings to express the intent of the project. Standard procedures in terms of getting a properly engineered set of plans would be required for us to, upon approval, adhere to a set of conditions that the staff would make on the project. Both the geotechnical engineer and the civil engineer would work together to make sure that the drainage and the soil stability are appropriate to the rules and regulations for which we have to follow, as well as the town code. So whatever is shown now is just a preliminary, it's an approach of how we're going to handle the drainage. And any studies, anything that we would be proposing from a drainage standpoint or a roadbed standpoint would have to be reviewed by the geotechnical engineer for him to buy off on it, because we both have liability in this.
Okay, thank you.
And to add on, it would also be reviewed by the Public Works Department as part of future submittals.
Okay. Let me ask Ms. Danforth, if that construction road slides downhill, who's liable?
Well, generally speaking, it would be the contractor and the engineer and the architect, I think, arguably also the property owner. I suspect that any subsequent lawsuit would involve all of those actors.
So the folks downhill will sort of be out of luck until all that legal stuff is sorted out.
You asked me who's liable. I'm afraid that whenever there is a harm suffered, the person who has suffered the harm has to go through a legal process, usually to get recompense, unless there's a negotiated settlement. That's just how our system works.
Okay. Thank you.
My turn? Or you guys both went? Okay. First question from me is, is there somebody who represents the family, either Lorelei or somebody else, who can just kind of give us an overview of who the family is? Because I remember Reading was a mother of two children, and she wanted to connect to the community on the downhill side. And I just am wondering if you can tell us a little bit more, because everyone's talking about the LLC, but would love to just have the, the actual story.
Well, I can tell you that human beings, mother, father, and children are residents of the property. Family lives there. Okay? And it's not an LLC, and for the, we'll submit for the administrative record, the current owner of the property is a property trust known as the Victor Chang Trustee of the Corder Madera Property Trust. And this deed was recorded in 2024. There is no LLC that owns that. So we'll make this deed part of the public record. So that's the answer. And I understand the curiousness of who the folks are that live there. They're extremely private, and they choose to not make themselves public, and they have the right to do that, and they have serious security concerns. And so through this process, it's not always been, unfortunately, pleasant and polite. And so that's, that's another reason. But I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I'm not going to, of course, reveal their identity.
That's fine. I just, I just wanted to understand the circumstance a little better.
And I'll give this to Madam.
And do the children go to the local schools? Do they attend schools here locally? You don't want to talk about that? Okay.
I'm not going to answer that. I'm not going to answer that, but I will say, in a letter that I submitted to the, that's going to be the next letter that's now going to go into the administrative record, that there was a threat by the community that the children would be bullied in school if this project was approved. That was said, and that letter is now going in the public record as well.
All right. Well, I hadn't heard about that. Thank you for that. Okay, so, so moving on to, I have a couple of other questions. That was just kind of an aside. So the longtime maintenance of the public right of way, which is currently done by the gardener, the longtime employee of the family or the property, would that continue after the fact? Does the, does the property take responsibility for the right of way?
That has been the history for 36 years by, I think, the property manager's name is Saul, and Senor Saul. And that has been a courtesy that has allowed, of course, the public to be able to access that, because if it wasn't the case, then you would get Scotch broom, berries, what, you know, and trash has been dumped there. And so, so that has allowed the public to go on that area, which is the, which is a paper street, subject to a right of way. And so, again, I want to emphasize, after the project, no one's saying that the public can't have the exact same access that they have today. And if you're trying to make as a condition of approval that the, that the property owner continue to maintain that, I think that that's not, it's, it's being done as a courtesy, but I don't think there's a connection or nexus between the driveway and being able to say, and Ms. Danforth may have an opinion about that, but conditioning, we'll give you a driveway if you continue to spend maintenance funds on a, on a, on a public right of way that the public can use. There's Supreme Court cases on point about that. That's, I would suggest, a taking. I was going to say, as a matter of good faith, I can't imagine the existing circumstances with the chain going up and the gate staying where it is, that the public can have the exact same access. And we've moved the driveway five feet up, so it's minimizing any amount of encroachment onto the paper street. And so, basically, we get the status quo.
Okay. So just kind of continuing on in that vein, I'm here, what I'm finding hard to find, to make the variance finding is number four, because almost everybody here has spoken with some credibility about the detriment to their neighborhood. And, and the alteration of the public right of way is one of them, the noise is another, the insecurity of the risk and all those things. So I'm just wondering, is there anything the appellant is willing to do with regard to the public right of way or any other aspect of this project to help us balance out the obvious detriments that they are going to experience with something? And I don't know what it is. I mean, to me, if I were the neighbors, I would say, make the, make the place look really beautiful when you're done, like restoring it as, you know, as better. And you had requests for that gate to be reopened down below. I think there's a lot of options for the applicant to help us get beyond that number four finding, which is just, it's obviously monumental damage, not just to the year that they're going to spend, you know, on vacation in Europe so they don't have to listen to it. No, I don't. I just, I'm just wondering if there's anything you can propose that would help me make, be able to make that finding, or any answer to how do we make that finding?
Okay. So a couple of things, I think, with due respect, Madam Mayor, it's not fair to say vacation in Europe, obviously.
Sorry. I was just saying, it's going to be an impact for the community, and I just want to know what you can do to help us make that finding.
Okay. Finding number four says you can have detrimental impact or to the public safety, welfare, that sort of thing. Okay. I'm trying to understand what that would be. The driveway that we're talking about is located on private property. They're improving, just like someone would put in a fence, a retaining wall, an extra bedroom, a swimming pool or something. This just happens to be a driveway. Now, I understand what I'm going to hear from everybody. Well, it's a very large driveway. Well, yeah, because it's the size, because the fire department is requiring that it meets current code. What a shock. Yes, they want current code. They want, they want to be able to drive their trucks and equipment and people safely in and out, and it benefits everyone. The paper street, a condition of approval by the Planning Commission was, it has to be the same or better than what's there. And we've shown you the renderings of photos that's in the administrative record now. It says it's showing you that actually the surface of the paper street is probably going to be enhanced.
It's probably going to be, sorry?
Enhanced. It's, you know, right now, it's just dirt. We're going to get, the first portion of the paper street from Alta Terrace, which is public right of way, to the driveway entrance, that has to be strengthened so the fire trucks, a 70,000-pound fire truck can safely go on that. So that has to be changed a little bit. You need a retaining wall. You need roadbed or something like that. I'm not an engineer. Drew over there can tell you much better what's going to go on that, but you got to make that portion stronger so as truck, as fire truck can safely go on it. After the driveway entrance, it's, there's no change. Where only thing that's going to happen is the chain that's there is going to be moved so that, to pass the driveway entrance, where it's now at the be, where it's now near the beginning of that. And that driveway, that chain was put up by the neighborhood because they're trying to keep cars and people, or I mean, I guess not people, people can walk around the chain. I don't see, I don't see where you're, where you're making the conclusion that there's public detriment. You said the construction impact of, it's a 10-month, it's a 10-month, wait, wait, it's a 10-month process. And one of the reasons why it's longer is because one of the conditions of approval by the Planning Commission was to change the building hours from seven to eight, no work on Saturdays, as a concession to the community to have less impact. If you have it the standard hours that are under the, this Corder Madera ordinance, Drew will tell you to be, I think, multiple weeks shorter.
Okay, you're answering questions that I'm not asking, and I would like you to answer some questions that I, I just want to have a, you know, a final, a final answer from the applicant, that no concessions are being offered. I love that you moved things back off the driveway. Oh, wait, I'm not supposed to be commenting yet.
Okay, no, I'm going to offer you a concession.
I'm going to stop asking questions, so you have to stop answering them.
But I'm going to offer you a concession. You asked for one, I want to give you one.
Okay.
Okay, we will commit to keeping the roadway clear, the maintenance that's been going on. We will commit to that. We'll also commit to a donation that would be made to the fire authority, the Central Marin Fire Authority or Department. I'm always confused, Chief Martin, whether you're an authority or a department. So whichever one you are, there would be an offer. So, and that, and those funds could be used for fire suppression purposes generally in Corder Madera as the fire authority deemed fit.
Okay. If I, if I could continue on with just the question I was going to ask before. So when you said that beyond the apron, I understand the apron has to be solidified and strengthened to support the basic traffic going into the driveway. But beyond that, so for the construction vehicles, you'll be adding the fiber, the fabric, and then the gravel. And then, if the community's desire is for it to be returned to its original condition, how does it again become a forest floor? Not a driveway, but a country road feeling dirt park, like, it feels like a state park in there to me. How do we get back to that physically? Maybe you need an engineer, contractor, somebody to speak?
Well, the answer is, after the driveway entrance, it can be. In fact, that's, I think, part of the conditions of approval. Drew can talk to that. But the first part
How do you do that physically? Do you remove the gravel and remove the?
Well, now it's that, those aren't legal questions.
I'm just, I'm just wondering about logistics, how it actually happens.
The construction, the construction access that we're talking about, there will be a fabric put down on the existing ground with rock. Once construction's done, that rock will be taken back, hauled off, and the fabric will be taken back. And then, we're going to restore the ground with proper soil for accessibility, as well as revegetation.
So you'll put new soil down and then plantings? And do the neighbors get to have a say in those plantings?
That's not for me to answer.
Okay. All right. Well, we, we can wait and do that later. Okay?
I will say, I will say, as conditions of approval, the Planning Commission required two meetings before we start building between neighbors and the applicant, and that would be the time that we would have discussions about trying to do the restoration, exactly as the mayor is talking about.
But what I think we need is some kind of stipulation that in those meetings, the, there, there is some actual negotiation and consideration given to what the neighborhood would like to see. And I don't know how to facilitate that. I mean, it's easy to say have a meeting, but, okay, so I'm supposed to be moving on to comments. So I'm going to, I'm sorry.
Suggestion?
Yeah.
So with, with respect to the detriment, I think it goes far beyond just the visual part of this situation, right? It's the traffic. It's a lot of other impacts to the neighborhood. So I don't think just repairing that, unless you could really bring it back to what it is today. But what I would suggest is that we actually get some real renderings done of what this would look like, truly, because what we have today is not even close to what this is going to look like. So I'd suggest that we actually hire someone jointly who will come in and create a real rendering of what 12 to 13-foot walls are going to look like, of what the gravel driveway is going to look like, and what the views are going to look like from the hillside across with 47 trees removed.
Okay. Well, we still have to make a decision tonight. And I'm sorry, we're not going to take any more comment right now. We're going to, well, actually, I do, I need to close the public hearing officially?
Yes. Once, once there are no more questions from council, you'll close the public hearing, and then you move on to discussion amongst the council.
So can I ask one more question of the appellant? One more question of the appellant, if I could. So if the public right of way were somehow restored to where you really liked it and everybody was happy, would that be enough to make you feel like there was no, I mean, I know there's a detriment, but would it balance it out for you? Or is there just no, you know, I'm always looking for a win-win.
I know, I know. I think the hard thing is, is that everyone has different concerns. But I think the other massive concern we have is the removal of 47 trees, and it's the environmental impact, and it's the impact on potential. And I know we don't know, you know, I'm not saying there's drainage issues. I know they're good plans. But you guys have heard that, like, you're removing all those trees. We don't know what's going to happen. Just because you can do it doesn't mean you should.
And what about planting more trees in the public right of way? Asking for them to plant more trees in the public right of way, or?
I think, I still think it'd change the overall character of the right of way. And that's why I would ask to say, I know, I know you have to make a decision tonight. Can one of the decisions be to actually see what this would look like with real renderings? Because we don't know. And it's a he said, she said.
All right. Thanks very much. Okay, so, you know, we've got another question from Councilman Andrews of the appellant.
Yeah. Do you know the population up on Alta Terrace, in particular, is it a bunch of young families where they've got to get the kids to elementary school at 8:00?
Don't know, but I'll defer to them. I think there are a few young families up there, Alta Way and Alta Terrace. Yeah. Oh, for sure. Yeah, there are.
Okay.
Thinking of just a few right now.
If construction is kicking off there, it'll be hard to get the darlings to school on time.
Or for anyone to come down Alta Terrace. Yeah. Yeah. I think if, you guys have driven on, driven on those roads, they're super narrow, and they're going to get blocked. So even if you're coming out of, you know, Sausalito Street or down the drone, it could all get blocked.
Okay, I have just a couple more questions. And this one is of Ruben Martin. Hello, Chief. Is there any way to facilitate the use of the driveway for emergency evacuations by having some kind of automatic unlock in the event of a major fire? by having some kind of automatic unlock in the event of a major fire? I mean, I can understand. Everybody's saying, I'm not going to go drive up and wait for a locked gate to open up. They just go down. But in the extreme possibility, is there?
For security reasons, you'd have to have a key.
You'd have to.
For the private property.
So somebody would have to be assigned a key?
Yes.
Like the NRG or something?
Negative. So it would be all, so we couldn't assign a key to the NRGs because the keys we have open up every commercial business in the town of Corte Madera.
Well, this could be a separate lockbox that the NRG has that nobody else has?
Because it's a fire department key. So we use it, utilize it for fire department access where we can override the electrical gate system to allow us for access so the property owner doesn't have to come down and open it for us in a case of emergency. So those keys we do not issue to the public. And we've had requests for residents to try to give them keys to open space, which use those same keys, which then would then compromise every commercial occupancy within the town of Corte Madera.
Okay, good.
So those are keys that are under lock and key, so to speak, within our fire trucks, meaning that our firefighters have to punch in a separate identifiable code for each person.
Okay.
So if a key gets lost, I know who it belongs.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. And then just another loose end from either the engineer or designer contractor. So the stability of the land below the public right of way in the, at least the early stages of the public right of way is, was a big concern that I heard about time and again was what could happen with this hillside below? And there's, you've got a retaining wall along there now. Is, what is the purpose of that retaining wall? Is that going to stabilize that hillside? Or are you going to do some kind of drainage? Or what, what is that retaining wall shown there?
I think that'll be a joint answer between the, the two of us. Primarily that, that public access road is all in cut. So it's all primarily excavation. So it's, there's not a lot of soil, there's some soil development on that, but it's mostly in excavation. So it's not, it, it doesn't appear to be inherently unstable or anything. It's, it's pretty firm ground.
So even the land below it, going behind the houses is pretty stable?
Are you referring to the driveway all the way down to the entrance?
Well, yeah, all the way, the public right of way is what, 600 some feet?
Just within the public right of way.
Uh huh. So is it, you're obviously not planning a retaining wall all the way along the edge there. It's only goes to a certain point, right?
Correct, correct.
And the reason for that retaining wall is to allow for the proper width. The fire department allowed us to neck that down to 14 feet because it's, it's in alignment with the existing conditions. And it allows us to have the proper grade and the loading that we need to be able to put a fire truck onto. So the retaining wall is holding up the roadbed above that we have to, that we need to comply with the requirements.
So the, the retaining wall down low is to support the activity up above?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? Anything that's come up while you've been going through your 480-page staff report? All right, then I think we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. And we're almost on the 10:30 moment of truth. Want to go ahead and make a motion?
I'll move. We extend the meeting to 11:00 PM.
I'll second.
And take a vote?
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cacisa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Avazia?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, so we come back to the council now for discussion, kind of among ourselves, to figure out what the heck are we going to do tonight? We do have a couple of options. We can either uphold the appeal. We can turn down the appeal. We also have an opportunity to approve or turn down the appeal with some additional considerations and requests for conditions of approval. And we could also remand it back to the planning commission to look at certain things. Oh, here we go, all four. So we can deny, we can modify, we can approve the appeal, or we can remand to the action of the planning commission. So what's your pleasure, counsel? I have no idea what they think, by the way. We don't, we have not talked about anything.
Well, I, I think we do have to determine, or do we, which plan? Because we've been, another rendering has been introduced.
I had been thinking about the more recent, so the modified.
Me too. I agree. Okay, so we're talking about the modified plan.
Yes.
Okay, who's, who wants to start? Who's got, who's got their things figured out?
Well, you know, as in the discussion part of it, this is really difficult because, I mean, you know, you, making the findings is one piece of it, and also just thinking what is good for the long run. I always say our job is to take the broad and distant view. So when I look over long after I'm gone, and that hill is going to still be there, and those roads will likely still be very narrow, it makes, it's not, it's not unsensible to, to have that driveway. There's, it makes, it does make sense. And, but will it? And then I'll say why, why I think it makes sense, because I think that on a dangerous area like that, and it is just, you know, we all make different choices about where we live. And some of us live in really, we choose to live in really dangerous places. And I think that is a dangerous place to live, not just because of fire, but also because of the narrow roads and the accidents that could happen up there. So in the long run, I think for the future, it's good, it would be good to have it there. It would be good to have the turnout. It would be good to have the driveway. And that someday, you know, it's, it's going to be needed. So that's where I come down. I'll stop talking now and let somebody else talk.
Who's next? Jim, you ready?
Yeah. Basically, the parcel is currently not landlocked, so there is no necessity to put a driveway in there. This is a nice to have. If I lived there, I'd probably want it. But it's not absolutely necessary, so I'm going to probably approve the appeal.
Okay, Brad, how you feeling?
Fired. No, first of all, I want to thank, first of all, I want to thank Martha. I think she did a really great job with the staff reports, reaching out to neighbors, the property owners, everybody. I think she did a great job. I want to thank all the neighbors also that showed up. I can't remember whoever took the lead on it. That's probably one of the best presentations I've seen, and you guys were really well prepared. And I want to thank also, I want to say the property owners, and I want to thank your team. And I know there were some detrimental comments or derogatory comments made to the family, which on behalf of town, I want to apologize to them. I don't think we, according to mayor's, the community, I don't think we're that way. There's always the one offs, and I totally respect their privacy, and I totally understand where they're coming from. I think we just have to realize that that's what they want, and we should be respectful for it. So I thank you also. I'm still on the fence a little. I'm leaning towards though, I understand the driveway, I understand the necessity of it. I, I'm more siding, I think, with the fire side of it from a point of view of the, the ownership of the property owners, having a secondary access out of there, and also the improvement to that road, which will help the fire department side of it. I'm also looking at siding with staff. I know that the neighbors, again, you guys did a really good argument. You know, everything from the general plan, why the findings and the variances are off. And I guess there can always be a difference of opinion, but I would side more on, on the staff side. So that's kind of where I'm at, at this point of time.
I didn't, I didn't figure out how you were going to vote.
I didn't say I was going to vote.
Maybe why didn't you get it?
I've learned sometimes you have to keep an open mind because, again, we've heard the public, we've heard everybody out there. Now it's turned, our turn to speak. And I've seen council meetings where all of a sudden, you know, Eli says something that totally makes sense. So you kind of have to keep an open mind sometimes to the end.
Does it always have to be Eli that says something that makes sense? Don't I ever make sense? Eli.
He said, sometimes I say something that makes sense. Yeah, this is a hard one. I mean, I, I appreciate that, that both the, the applicant and the appellant's have, have come to this and been, you know, very reasonable here tonight, which I really appreciate. And I think, I think everybody is able to see that there are, you know, true facts and, and valid perspectives on both sides of this issue. And there's multiple different angles that you can come at this from, and, and many of them are valid. I think right now I'm kind of looking at it through the lens of these findings and trying to grapple with a couple of these specifically, that, you know, this concept of a grant of, of special privilege, especially in, in the context of my earlier question about how it would be received if, if a neighboring property wanted to build a second driveway. You know, I'm, I'm, both, there's, there's one variance finding and one design review finding that basically both say you have to, you have to ascertain that this proposal conforms with the general plan. I, I think Anne hit the nail on the head when she said that there's a lot in the general plan, and it is not all cohesive, you know, so.
It's old.
It, it's old. It's from 2009. And I think there's, there's elements of the general plan that would support this project. And there's elements of the general plan that would support, you know, not, not moving, not allowing this project to move forward. So it, you know, it, it, our challenge becomes, you know, trying to weigh these conflicting elements of the general plan and figuring out which, you know, which, in the, in the broad and distant view, which are, are most important to the, you know, the well-being of, of the town and the community and, and, you know, the, the habitat. So, so it's, it's challenging. I, I will say also that, that there's an additional design review finding that, that, you know, you're supposed to find that this will not unnecessarily remove trees, and that it doesn't include excessive grading, you know. On one hand, the, the driveway is not required. The fire department is not telling them to build it. So I, so, you know, you could, you could argue that, that the project is unnecessary, and every tree that would need to be removed to accommodate the project is, is unnecessary. And, and you could argue that all grading related to this project is excessive if the project is, is not required. On the other hand, Chief Martin told us that if this home were built today, they would absolutely require that it have a second driveway. And that is incredibly powerful to me, you know, and I, I, you know, I, I think, like, like the chief said, you know, we don't go and, and require homeowners to, you know, just, we don't just show up at the front door and say, you need to change this, this and this about your house to bring it up to modern code. But if a homeowner says, hey, I voluntarily want to bring my home up to modern code, you know, that feels to me like something that we ought to support. So it's tough. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where I'm at yet.
That didn't help, by the way.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to make it, I'm going to make it even worse. No, I, I definitely could sit here and make pretty valid arguments on both sides. Because, you know, I was thinking, it's a mom with two small children. She probably just wants to be part of Corte Madera and not Mill Valley, and who would blame her? Everybody would rather be part of the Corte Madera community, right? And she can just drop down the hill to get to school and shopping and all that. So I don't blame her for wanting to be part of Corte Madera. But then when Len said they're really private people and they like to be isolated, I thought, well, you know, I don't know that that could let me find for that hardship that they need to connect if, if that's not really their interest. So I, that, that kind of goes both ways. I'm assuming from the owner's side that this idea that you would not develop the property for 10 years or something, is that a no-go? Oh, no, you don't. I, I'm sorry. Okay, maybe I shouldn't. Wait, oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Len, Len, Len. I closed the public hearing. You can't talk now. I'm so sorry. That was my own mistake, and I won't ask any more questions.
Pat, if I may, Martha, can you answer that question regarding subdividing that property, what they can build up there? Again, as of, off day today?
Thank you.
And we'll direct the question to staff?
There are two ways to, to subdivide a property. You could do it through kind of the traditional way of submitting a tentative parcel map that requires discretionary review to the planning commission and the town council. And in order to do that, you need to, after a parcel split, continue to meet the minimum parcel size. In this case, the minimum parcel size is five acres. The property is 11.4 acres. So the most parcels they could create through that traditional process is two. I will say though, that it's in the hillside land capacity district, which has additional requirements. And oftentimes parcels that meet the minimum parcel size cannot be split because of some of these additional requirements in this capacity. The other way to subdivide a property is through Senate Bill nine, which was, I believe, adopted in 2021. And this allows any, almost any property in the state of California, as long as it's 2,400 square feet, to be subdivided into two. And that is a ministerial, ministerial process, and there's advantages for people to go through ministerial process. So that likely would be the, the option a homeowner would choose. So the most you would have would be two, two, two parcels.
And then there, there's been no indication that the owner, at this point in time, that you know of that the owner is going to, has any intention to either do a lot split or anything under SB nine, again, at this point in time.
You've received no indication.
Thank you.
Okay, back to me for comments. So I will wrap up quickly by saying that I think we may need to remand this back to the planning commission to consider the public right of way question. Because to me, if the applicant were to bend over backwards and really make this Alto Woods something really beautiful at the end of it all for the neighbors, then I could feel, I could make that finding about, well, it's not really a detriment to the community because they're going to end up being made whole. And I know you're saying you want to plan to refurbish it, but it just seems like that's, I mean, that's a wish and a prayer. So I just think we need a more actual practical plan for how the applicant is going to kind of, you know, I, I read a lot about making things right for the community, and I, and I just want to add that I did some research to figure out this public right of way question, and I read from Cal Cities, which is an organization that educates mayors and council members and all kinds of officials, that elected officials have a significant responsibility to protect public rights of way. This duty stems from an understanding that public rights of way are a unique public resource held in trust by the city for the benefit of the public. They are integral to the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. And I find that to be really compelling, and that's why I directed over 100 questions to staff in the last few days. And I thank you for your patience and tolerance there. And I just think that I, I can't make the findings to allow the driveway unless the, they're going to somehow set it right with the community. And so I either have to uphold the appeal or send it back to the planning commission to, to figure out this last, you know, it's, it's a big thing. And I'm not saying staff should have figured it out and didn't because there's just sometimes no time and no bandwidth. But most, I was kind of taking checkmarks for a while. And most everybody who commented today, their biggest concern was, you're ruining our beautiful woods. And it, even though you say you want to restore it, there's no real plan for how you're going to undo all that impact and all that gravel and all that mess and everything. And it's, it's going to be a big job. And I just don't understand how it's actually going to get done. And I don't want to be dealing with this two years from now with major unhappy people because of, of what happened. So I, I don't know. Where, where do you guys want to come out?
I'll, I'll say, if I may, I, I, I don't think that it's the forest floor that is the concern of what's being ruined. I think what the people are saying is they don't want to see the wall, and they don't want to see the, the driveway. I, I, you know, I will say when I was up there, someone made it very clear to me, you know, that it's, it's, was not, is it okay if I say that? That, that they just did not. not, is it okay if I say that? That, that they just did not want it. It was not about making it prettier or making it nicer. It was more like, we just want everything to stay the way it is. So I'm, so, so, so what, so sort of the plea I'm making is that maybe it's better to make a decision because I don't know if remanding it to the planning commission will get us out of limbo.
Go back there and then it can kick back here.
Kick back here.
Anyway, does anybody have a, does anybody have a motion to make? Should we just try to see what we can, what, I mean, I, I, I mean, I'd like to hear anyone else's opinion too.
I have another question, I'm sorry, I have another question for Martha. I thought one of the conditions of the, the planning commission was that the, I say property owner, applicant, what, property owner has to restore it back to its original condition and/or better, correct? I'm sorry, that's part one. And then part two is, will those walls be, I want to say shaded anyway, with plants or anything like that? So you're not looking at a flat-out wall, you're looking at trees or plants?
There is a condition of approval that requires vines planted on the retaining wall. So we'll take time for things to grow before it's fully screened into the environment, but that is the intent.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, one other question. On these conditions of approvals like that one, what does the town do to make sure that those conditions of approval are met? That's part one. And then also that whatever plans are submitted, whatever we decide tonight or planning commission has decided, that that's what actually gets built in. It's not all of a sudden, oh, no, we're making the driveway, this way we're changing whatever.
So an application gets submitted to the building division, a building permit application, which is reviewed by all departments. And as part of a planner's role, you're verifying that all the conditions of approval are being satisfied through that submittal. And then some conditions are verified in the field, for instance, requirements such as planting vines. And in this case, there's a couple of conditions that require ongoing maintenance and monitoring. For instance, the replacement trees is something, there's annual requirements for arborist reports to be submitted. So there's a variety of ways that staff ensures a project is, is built to conform to the conditions added to it.
And is there a way to hold, a holdback, you know, have them post a bond? Because I know, you know, projects run out of money at the end and it gets difficult to do those last touches. And in this case, the public's part of it is gonna be the last touch. So is there a way to guarantee with a bond to protect that?
That is an option. And it's something we commonly do with, for instance, landscaping. We, if, if a project's built and the landscaping's not completed, we take in a cash deposit to make sure it's built within a certain timeframe.
Is it, is that project set that way now to do that, to collect a bond? Or is that something that would have to be a condition?
Do you want, I mean, it's something that we have the discretion to do as staff. And so if that's direction that the council would like to give, we're certainly happy to do that. It's not uncommon for staff to accept sort of a performance bond to make sure that all the conditions are met as required in any sort of permit that's granted.
But we have no idea what their budget would be to do that. So we can't possibly come up with a number, right? How do we, how do we come up with that number?
Once, well, I think we have to actually, the plans would get developed further to actually meet that condition of approval, which is to restore the property. And you've heard some details about how they do that, but that would all factor into exactly what the planning staff would ultimately recommend would be the amount that we would request. And we usually do a little bit of a buffer anyways. And this is gonna be, just to emphasize, under the condition of approval from the planning commission, it's restoring to the satisfaction of the public works director. And you see Chris over there as well. So a team effort in reviewing it. And there, there are also those two meetings, I think, as well, that are prior to the building permit. Certainly, I would think this would be something that could be discussed as part of those meetings.
Okay.
I'm still having problems, but maybe I'm the only one. It's, it's hard. I'm, I'm concerned if I could just confess that the attorney for the applicant doesn't recognize that it's a public right-of-way. And I definitely checked with our, with Chris Good's predecessor, RJ Suko, and he said, "It is absolutely a public right-of-way because even if it wasn't on paper," which I understand the original subdivision owner did not designate it as a public right-of-way, "but because of the ongoing use over the decades that it's become a public right-of-way." And to have the applicant not really recognizing that is real concerning to me. Okay. You, okay, great. All right. I would like that on the record. Okay. Oh, no, no, no. I, I mean, I don't, I don't mean that. I, I just mean, somebody write it down. Is anyone gonna make a motion?
Okay. Well, you know what? Make a motion, see what happens. I make a motion.
Mike?
Microphone.
Let me just pull up what I say. Um, let's see. Okay, maybe it's easier to get it here. Let's see. Okay, so do I just use the number? Wait a minute. They put it in.
Take your time, Rosa.
Yeah, sorry. I'm just wanna.
How many are up for the latest you've ever been up this year? Sorry about that. We could, we'd go faster if we could, but.
Yeah, I, it's just.
We, we've called, we did call the hearing, so you can just, you know, make a motion to approve or deny.
Okay.
Or modify. You don't need to name the property. We've done that.
Okay, great. I make a motion to deny the appeal for Resolution 34-2025.
Is there a second?
I can second that, but I'd like two modifications.
Oh, yeah.
One is, I'd like to see the applicant post a bond. I would direct staff to have them post the bond, but I would leave it up to staff on the dollar mill. But just make sure it's sufficient enough so that there's incentive to get it done. And the second one is, I would like direct staff to see if we can have the applicant provide renderings as one of the, one of the neighbors has said, like, from across the way. So you can actually get a visual, if I'm looking across the valley, what it's gonna look like, which I'm sure with computers nowadays, it should be possible to do. And I would assume also that we're also looking at alternative B.
Oh, yeah, the second.
Second one, yeah. So with those modifications, I can second it.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Andrews?
No.
Councilmember Beckman?
No.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Vazio?
No.
Thank you. That motion does not carry.
Okay, I'll try a motion. I would like a number, I would like to choose a number two, to modify the planning commission's action by changing the conditions of approval and associated findings, and may require staff to come back to us later with a modified resolution. And I think that what I would propose is that in order to restore Alto Woods to its current or better condition, that not only is there a bond posted, but that the applicant agree to work with a committee made up of residents, maybe your Alto Woods Homeowners Association and the town, to design and select for plantings, whatever, whatever the public wants for that right-of-way, that the applicant, hopefully the family themselves, if they want to, could be involved, or their representative with the town and the residents having a voice. And maybe they want to replant some trees, maybe they want redwoods, maybe whatever. But I think we gotta give something to the community here to make up for their losses. I feel like it's my responsibility to do that.
Madam Mayor, may I interject?
So I don't know how that's a motion. That was a long motion. I'm sorry.
May, may I interject, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As stated, that would be a very difficult condition of approval to enforce. It would be easier for the staff to implement that condition of approval if you would allow the public works director the final decision after consultation with all the foregoing parties.
Okay.
So that there's no sense of, there's no chance of a logjam happening between the applicant and the neighbor.
I just want the neighbors to have a voice in the woods and when it's done and have some control over what's, over what's done, over the funds that are available for the restoration. I don't know how to word it, but maybe.
Perhaps.
Confused.
Thank you.
Didn't, didn't we just vote and? Oh, okay. Didn't we already vote? And what, what is this?
Okay, so I want to modify the conditions of approval specifically to include the neighbors in the planning for the restoration of the public right-of-way.
But didn't, didn't the denial fail?
Excuse me.
No, no. Councilmember Thomas, the, the resolution, there was a motion, a second, and a vote. And then the motion failed. So now it's up to the council to decide if they can formulate a motion that can garner a majority vote.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to, I'm trying to come up with a solution that we can get votes on. Because I have to say, I've seen, I've, I've seen some beautiful places in the world where there is like a big, expensive, rich-looking driveway. And then it's connected to this beautiful, open field with children playing. And it's, feels magical to me. So I think if you had a nice enough park-like feeling down there with a public right-of-way, maybe wildflowers or whatever, that I think you'll get over the idea that somebody's gonna drive up there and there's a driveway. Okay, okay. I'm not, I'm, I, I, I'm not supposed to be talking to anybody other than these guys. So I don't know. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm trying.
Right. I, I have been sitting here quietly chewing on this. And I just, I feel that there are four findings, two design review findings and two variance findings that I do not feel I can make. I, I, designer review findings, number one, I don't feel that I can find that this conforms with the general plan. Two very explicit elements in the general plan in the, what is it, resource conservation and sustainability section, 7.3 is about retaining hillside habitat. 7.4 is about protecting large native trees. I don't, I, if, if this were entirely necessary, if there was no driveway already serving this house, I think it would be one thing. There is a driveway, an existing driveway serving the house. The house is less than 600 feet, or I think it's right around 600 feet from Corder Madera Avenue on its existing driveway. If it was like half a mile or even like a quarter mile, maybe that would be a different story. It's 600 feet from the road. So I, it's, it's hard for me to see how that, you know, how there's an argument in favor of a second driveway that overrides these pretty explicit provisions in our general plan. Therefore, I also can't find that it will not unnecessarily remove trees or does not include excessive grading. You know, and, and I think most troubling to me is it, again, it just, it does feel like a grant of special privilege when I consider it in light of how a similar request made by a neighboring property, you know, how, how I think that would be reasonably likely to be received by a planning staff or the planning commission. So, you know, I, I, I don't think I can make these findings in light of that. I, I guess, you know, I'll make a motion to approve the appeal and overturn the planning commission decision.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the appeal. Can we take a vote?
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
No, I think I should go back to planning if anything.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
No.
Mayor Vazio?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Mayor Vazio.
Give a little grace for the people who worked really hard on this on both sides. Thanks.
Mayor Vazio, we do have, I want to take the, the pulse of the council for the next item, which is the Madera Gardens.
I would like to propose that the further, the rest of the agenda be put onto a future agenda.
If I, if I may, I just want to note, I'd like to, it is an important item from a timing standpoint in getting.
Is this a review?
This is the Madera Gardens.
Oh, oh, no, let's go ahead and do that.
Great, thank you.
Right. Well, thank you all so much for coming. I have a feeling it's not over. It's, this is a.
Well, I thank everybody for all their hard work on both sides. A lot of money and a lot of time. Madam Mayor, we need a vote to extend the meeting one more time.
Okay. And we'll now entertain a motion to extend the meeting.
So moved.
Okay, we need a motion to extend the meeting?
So moved.
Okay, everybody, let's move on outside. We have to keep working here. We're on the night shift.
I'll second.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do need you to leave the building or leave the, go out into the lobby so we can continue our meeting. Thanks very much.
Okay, we had a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30, made by Councilmember Beckman and seconded by Councilmember, because he says so. I'll call the roll on that. Councilmember Andrews?
What are we doing?
A motion was made to extend the meeting.
Continue the meeting for another half hour. We're only gonna go for a few minutes. All right.
Okay. Council, Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Vazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion.
Okay, we need the room cleared, please. Oh, look at. There's a little bit of.
Right, shall we?
Sure, but they, okay, we are going to move on to our next item on the agenda. Oh.
That's okay. Thank you very much, Barry.
I'll take some. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I love Cluots.
Are you selling?
Not selling, given.
All right, so business, business item 7A is consideration and possible action to authorize the interim director of public works to approve the plans and contract documents and authorize the advertisement of bids and award a construction contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder to the base bid amount not to exceed 3.25 million plus a 10% contingency for the Madera Gardens Complete Streets Program Number 24003. Do we have a staff report?
Yes.
Hello, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Vazio and council.
Working the night shift.
Yeah. Going late, so I'll try to make this quick. And we lost our whole audience too, so. So, yeah, I'll be going through our Madera Gardens Complete Streets project, requesting authorization to advertise. So the goals of the project, just really quick, we're trying to resurface all the roads in Madera Gardens. We're including complete streets improvements for traffic calming and increased safety for all users, bicyclists, pedestrians, and drivers. We're building ADA curb ramps at all crossings and repairing uplifted or damaged sidewalks and then repairing gutter ponding where we can. Next slide. So just a quick history of the outreach. In April this year, we held a virtual committee workshop to receive feedback from the community, mainly on our Complete Streets concepts. And then in May, we took those same concepts to the Bicycle and Advisory Committee, who were in support of the concepts. And then also in May, we completed our Madera Gardens Storm and Sewer Rehab Project, which replaced many of the sewers in the north side of the neighborhood and made important repairs to the storm network as well. Next slide. So just to go through project funding, the current base bid estimate is 2.95 million with a contingency and material testing that takes the total estimated project cost to 3.28 million. And then on the right, we have funding sources. There's, I won't go through each one, but we have a, a lot of funding sources included in the project that are part of like our reoccurring grants we get. in the project, um, that are part of like our reoccurring grants we get each year. Um, and then the sales tax would be approximately two million, um, going into the project. And I just wanna comment, the budgeted amount for this project was two point two million, and that was mainly because, um, the, there was some, uh, complete streets components included in that, but not to the extent that were, um, built into the project. So the estimate ended up being, uh, uh, decently higher than what our original budgeted amount was. So, let's see. And yeah, I just wanted also to mention, this is, you know, a pretty ambitious project. It's covering a large neighborhood, there's a lot of roads that need to be resurfaced, and so it comes with a big price tag as well. Next slide. So this is an exhibit showing basically our resurfacing plan. All the roads in yellow will be repaved, um, basically we'll grind and then add new asphalt. Um, the three roads in orange will have just a micro-surfacing treatment, and that's because those were all paved in, in recent, in the last like five years, and they're in good condition. So that's the paving plan. Next slide. Uh, this is, uh, our concept for the complete streets improvements. So, starting on the right side at Lakes, Lakeside and Mohawk, um, we're planning to install a traffic circle with, um, bulbouts on either side. The goal, you know, we had complaints about people kind of speeding through that intersection, um, and the, the intersections, uh, kind of off-centered and very large, so it's a long, there's long stretches for people to cross the road. So, um, basically, those improvements are meant to fix all those issues. Um, and then going down Lakeside, we have, uh, additional bulbouts at several of the intersections to reduce the length of crossing and just increase pedestrian safety. So, next slide. Um, so, and these are just some examples of the improvements we're planning to include. Um, we have physical bulbouts on some intersections, um, floating islands, um, painted bulbouts, and then, and so those are all basically meant to just reduce the length of the crosswalk for pedestrians.
So, that roundabout will be where, uh, Lakeside and?
Uh, Lakeside and Mohawk.
Okay.
So, so right when you turn off, Tame Pius, it's that first big.
Ram in the, each other all the time.
Yeah. So yeah, that's, that would be, that's the one location we're looking at, a traffic circle. Um, and it's not, it's, it's different than a roundabout, because as you can see here, it's flat on top, it has to be mountable, so a fire truck can drive over the top of it. So, um, unlike a roundabout, which usually has vegetation and other things in the center that basically make it so someone can't go over the top of it.
Does that mean a car can drive over it too?
Technically, but it would be uncomfortable, and you'd have to go very slow, because there's, uh, a four-to-five-inch difference in elevation there. Um, but we, you know, we, our engineers, our design team did turning movements, and a fire truck just can't make it around the traffic circle without going over the top of it. Um, and then we are planning to include rapid flashing beacons where the High Canal Path crosses, um, Lakeside. So that will also help, um, increase safety for people crossing. Uh, next slide. Uh, and so that's pretty much it, we're hoping, um, you know, if we get approval and bid, we can begin construction in September. And we're already kind of starting late, so we're gonna be kind of going into the winter months, but we're hoping to get as much as we can done before, um, the rainy season starts. So, any other questions?
Other questions for Chris, go ahead, Eli?
Thank you, Chris, um, couple questions. One, like, if we were interested in potentially trying to trim the cost on this thing, I'm, I'm curious how much, how much potential savings there is by sort of triaging the, the intersections where the improvements, um, are like most apt to be used by the most schoolchildren? So like, for example, like, there's two bulbouts at the, oh, there's two intersections of Lakeside and Mohawk. So at the northern intersection of Lakeside and Mohawk, there's two bulbouts planned there. If we were to say like, that's one of the lowest foot-traffic intersections in this plan, what if we nixed those bulbouts? Is that any kind of like, actually appreciable savings?
Yeah, we, I mean, um, I don't know the exact figures, but definitely, um, removing bulbouts would save some money, because there's also required, um, storm drain improvements that have to be made there, 'cause where we have a curb, uh, catch basin on the corner, we then have to create two catch basins on either side, and so it, it does add a lot of costs. And so, yes, we could reduce that cost. And I, I went through and tried to estimate roughly what all the complete streets components and sidewalk work, and it was roughly seven hundred and thirty thousand for that part. But like I said, there's also potentially some storm drain work that's required from the bulbouts. So, um, if we went through, we could go through and potentially remove some things.
Okay.
That was.
I, I don't know to what extent that's a concern for my colleagues, but I just wanted to understand, you know, whether there's latitude or for us there to, to make some savings. My other question was, I was gonna ask if we can put a tree in the middle of the traffic circle, I now understand why that won't work. Um, but I do wanna know if, if, rather than a tree, if there's like some sort of just like very wimpy vegetation that we can put in that a fire truck can still drive over? I just feel like, you know, we do these, these pedestrian improvements all throughout town, and they're always like stamped concrete and stuff like that, and it just ends up feeling bleak, like, it feels like, you know, LA feels to me, where it's just like this concrete land and nothing's green, and, and it's like hot, you know, and it's just like, there's no shade, there's no plants. Um, and I feel like, I feel like these are like, these seem like low-hanging fruit, opportunities for easy wins for just like the, you know, the, the character of, and the feel of the neighborhood. I mean, you think of like how the hanging baskets have become like part of Corder Madera's identity, um, and like, where, you know, we're known throughout Marin for the hanging baskets. I feel like, you know, the, these are, I feel like relatively easy wins, if we can sneak in even just like the most basic of plantings, where we were gonna do stamped concrete or something like that, I think would be really nice. So I wanna know if there's an opportunity for that here.
And along those lines, like, can we just change the color from like white cement to?
Well, why don't, why don't we just get somebody to paint some beautiful flowers on it? Why don't we paint it with beautiful flowers? And let the neigh, let, let the artist neighborhood do that.
They can paint an egr.
First, you wanna save money, and then you wanna be expensive.
I, I, I do have one, I, I do have one follow-up on the, on the bumpouts, because I know they did those on El Camino in my neighborhood, and it was for traffic calming. Um, so I don't know if part of the purpose is not so much for the kids, because there may be less foot-traffic in that pedestrian way, but I know most people in a lot of neighborhoods complain about cars speeding, and when you bump it out, it's a psychological effect to, um, slow down.
That's, that's correct, yeah, it's, it's two purposes, it's for reduced crossing length, and then also to slow vehicles down who have to take those turns, because it's a much tighter corner, so, um, that's true, also, it's dual effect. And then to go back to Councilmember Beckman's comments, um, the traffic circle, we can't really do vegetation, I, um, if, because it's mountable, the fire department's not gonna like us having something soft in the center that their fire truck can sink into. So that's, I think that one's gonna be tough. I mean, we can always make it like pavers or stamped concrete, add some different options to make it a little, look a little better. Um, on the bulbouts, we have a little bit more latitude, but the, I think the main issue and why we were trying to avoid it is because, one, we don't have water, so it's hard to keep anything alive, and two, it, it just adds more maintenance for our staff to take care of, and they already are stretched thin with how much vegetation and like medians and other things around town that they're maintaining right now. So that's, that's kind of what we were weighing when we were trying to design it. Um, but I will say that the community had some similar comments about they would like to see vegetation versus just all concrete. Um, it's just hard to, to balance that. And we did, um, particularly in, um, Lakeside and Mohawk, where we're, we're looking at the traffic circle, we actually tried to pull out the corners to basically add more vegetated space behind the, the new sidewalk. So the new sidewalks will be, move out, and then basically, uh, the four people on each corner's front yards kind of extend a little bit more, just as a minimum effort to try and like, reduce some of the concrete.
If, if I may, guys, are you, okay, um, I could, can we get, see the slide where it had the photographs of the examples? If we could go back to that, I think it was the last slide before the comments page. Um, yeah, so I'm just wondering, down in the lower left with the painted bulbout, um, is that a bike lane there on the right?
Um.
The sort of terracotta-looking?
No, I, that's basically, uh, it's just meant to be like an exclusion area where vehicles can't enter. Um, it functions the same way as the regular bulbout in the top, it's just instead of adding a bunch of concrete to build like a raised area, um, you're just painting it out and having, um, those aren't ballards, but they're like delineators basically to just.
Are they permanent? The ballards, are they like, like?
No, they're, they're, um, they're more like delineators, so like, if somebody hit them, it doesn't, it would knock them over, yeah.
Okay, so no green anymore? Have we gone beyond the green indicators for bikes? Are we not doing that, or?
Um.
Or is there bike lanes anywhere?
This neighborhood wasn't, isn't in our bicycle master plan for bike lanes, so we weren't intending to do that. I mean, I think, I'd have to look again, there may be one street, it calls for Class Three, which is Sheroes, so potentially we could include that. Um, but I have to double-check, but yeah, definitely, it didn't call for any bike lanes.
So are you ready to go to bid now? Is that what you're trying to do, is to get to bid? But you don't really have all the specifics worked out yet, or?
Well, it's only just the Sheroes, that's the one thing, we, we don't, they're not currently included, but we could include them if, if we need to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Get anybody else, Jim?
Rosa, questions?
So if I talk to my neighbors, I have to tell them, get your sewer laterals checked by September first, it's a drop-dead date?
Yes, if, so, for the homes that were in our Storm and Sewer Project, we replaced their lower lateral, so they're all good. Um, everyone else in the neighborhood, they were, I believe they were all replaced in the last like fifteen years, but if they have work to do, then they should get it done, um, soon. And I think we sent letters out to everyone notifying them.
Anybody else? Okay, opening it up for public comment, I don't see anybody in the room. Is there anybody waiting online?
We do have attendees online, but no hands are raised, and we didn't receive any email public comment for this item.
Okay, so bringing it back to the council for discussion and/or a motion.
I can make the motion, this says interim, you're no longer interim, right? Is he official?
It's still interim.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so, uh, I make a motion to authorize the interim director of Public Works to approve the plans and contract documents, authorize the advertisement for bids and award a, uh, construction contract to lowest reasonable responsive bidder for the base amount not to exceed three point two five, two five oh million, plus ten percent contingency for the Madera Gardens Complete Streets Project Number twenty-four oh oh three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Avasio?
Yes.
If the motion carries.
And at this point, I'm wondering if I could make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that one.
Can we? Yeah, we can.
Well, I think just, and, and making sure we would bring the item on the work plan back at the September meeting?
Would that be all right?
We don't have an, that's fine with me.
It's fine with me, okay.
I, I.
I think it's not a good time to have that kind of conversation, we're just too tired.
Yeah, also, you know, I, I read the staff report, it was like, the, the matrix was quite self-explanatory. I feel like I personally would be comfortable with that just going out as like a public report. Um, if, if you or my colleagues feel that it's important to have a discussion at the next council meeting about it, we certainly can.
This was the first time we're doing this mid-year thing, so I would, didn't know exactly how much input the council wanted to have on it, so I.
I didn't even.
You're looking at your colleagues to whether the council, the rest of your council members.
Because I knew, I didn't think we'd get to it tonight, so.
I felt like what it said is we're on track, and if we're on track, I don't know.
Well, that's good to know. I mean, it won't be a big deal to put it in September, right? Okay. Except, no. That's why we're so jammed.
So we adjourned?
Okay, so, um, did we need a, did we need a roll call on adjournment? Or we're just, all, all in favor, say aye. Aye.